And we have a quorum. We are, are we waiting for one more? Okay, all right, just, all right. So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here online. And up first, we have an addressing homelessness grant program. And we have a presentation from Stephanie Nuttall.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. We are back again to discuss the addressing homelessness grant program. I'm going to spend just a couple of minutes bringing you up to speed on where things are at since our last meeting on October 20th. And then we'll talk about Council's options for what can come next. So, on October 20th, as we all remember, Pathways to Stability had the highest average score of all applicants reviewed, followed by Elk Island Trading Group and then Diversion by Design. Council directed staff to work with Pathways to Stability on a contract to bring forward to that November 5th council meeting. Consideration of a potential contract was made contingent on securing the End Street property by November 5th. So, some updates on the tasks that we had before us during that two-week period. First, I did meet with Pathways representatives on October 22nd in order to discuss potential contract terms. At that point, we discussed that I would need to have a contract ready by October 27th. That was the day that we had to submit all of our packet materials for that November 5th board meeting. Sent them a draft on October 23rd and then reminded them again on October 27th that I needed that back. And I did not get a response until October 28th, but they did come back with a response that the contract was acceptable. But that was after the point where I had to submit the documents. As far as End Street goes, I'm sure we're all aware that on October 28th, there was a county administration workshop. And at that workshop, they heard from a different entity regarding the End Street property and that other entity is also interested in acquiring it. And the county board indicated that they'd be looking at getting an appraisal and taking steps working with their property manager. There was no action taken toward allowing Pathways to Stability to use or acquire the End Street property. In addition, we saw that there was a statement from Commissioner Smith that the county was not negotiating with Pathways to Stability. So with that, we have a number of options that Council can consider. The first is to disqualify Pathways for not meeting contracting prerequisite of providing the documentation securing the property. Move forward with contract negotiations with Elk Island Trading Group, the second highest scoring. We can invite all applicants to submit their last best final proposal with re-review and scoring of all applications. Or we could determine that it is in the city's best interests to cancel the grant and then come back to consider alternative solutions to addressing homelessness in the city. And whatever Council decides today, whatever direction you provide, I will be preparing an addendum to the RFP to reflect that with any changing dates and any changing criteria or rules. So when I mentioned alternative solutions, we're not really prepared to discuss anything in depth today. I just wanted to give you an overview of some of the things that could be part of that discussion. I know this sounds horrible, but there could always be a new RFP, whether that's a standard RFP process, which is one that would not involve Council until time to review the contract, or another modified process such as we've done the last two go-rounds. We could look at the city acquiring property for a service provider, making sure that it had all the appropriate infrastructure, and then leasing that property to a provider to provide services for the city. Or we could contract for services on the property with a provider. We can also maintain our resting sites, current locations or alternative locations, and we could consider whether to have managed resting sites versus unmanaged resting sites. So those are some of the options that we have available if we want to start looking at alternatives to the RFP process. So with that, we can start, have a discussion on Council direction. Again, the three options that I'm aware of, there may be more, but the three that came to my mind were to disqualify Pathways, move forward with Elk Island, obtain final scores from all applicants and re-score, or cancel the grant and schedule a workshop to discuss alternatives. So with that, I will take questions or discussion.
And then I think I saw Kathleen and then Joel.
I think I'd like to just go ahead and make a motion to obtain final offers from all applicants and re-score. And since Pathways scored the highest, as you said, it's only fair that we allow the other applicants the same opportunity.
All right. I have a motion and a second. And do I have any discussion from the, oh, and then, well, I had Kathleen and then Joel. Oh, okay, Joel and then Kathleen.
One of the things, I went to OnTrack and asked them for their referral history. And I've heard that, in fact, we got an email about mental health, or excuse me, substance abuse and substance abuse treatment. OnTrack, that's their specialty, and they work across the state and they have a team that works across the state. Pathways does that as well, and both of them do a fine job. Regardless of the grant, both organizations are going to continue. Let me say that again. Regardless of where the grant goes, both organizations are going to continue. So really, what we're making is a choice of money. When I went to OnTrack, they had gotten 130 referrals from Pathways since January. I asked them how many referrals they got from Pathways, and they got zero. But they do, but OnTrack does refer people that have that orientation that would be beneficial to them because Pathways is a positive organization in our community. So OnTrack will refer some patients to Pathways for substance abuse. That's a little different story than what I've heard historically here on the dais, and I wanted people to be aware of that. The other thing is, like, next Monday, they're taking a consult from Mint, and they're going to be going to substance abuse treatment in Portland because OnTrack has the connections throughout the whole state and where there's appropriate treatment options. So with that, I'm going to be voting against this. I think we need, your motion, Eric, with respect, I'm going to be voting against it because I think we need to move on and we need to follow the contract law. And we had a contingency and U-Turn for Christ and Pathways bust their hearts, did their best, it didn't work out. And we need to be respectful of that process and move on to the second place.
Kathleen?
So, I want to say we want to be respectful to all the applicants and be fair. And in the first go, or the second go-around, nobody's property crossed the line or was adequate. So I think it's all completely and totally fair to choose Eric's option so that everybody has a chance to realign what they didn't get right in this grant proposal or this application.
And Rick?
I have a question for Joel. Joel, you made the statement, 130 referrals from U-Turn for Christ.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misspoke. 130 referrals from Mint. Mint, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Thank you.
I saw Indra, and then Rob?
Yes, I appreciate all of the applicants that applied, all three that made it through. I am coming at this from the perspective that this is in my neighborhood, this unmanaged camp has been in my neighborhood. We moved into A Street in February of this year, and then in mid-April, we added another total 150 sites of unmanaged camp over here. That's been in my neighborhood and the north end of town where all of my constituents live for over eight months. And so I'm coming from the point that it's time to progress forward. I mean, this is our second RFP. We're trying to follow the process. The process is trying to work, but it keeps getting delayed and delayed and delayed. And I think it's unfair to the people who live around. I think it's unfair to the people who live inside the unmanaged camp. I think we need to get going and progress forward and make a step forward. It's time to make a decision on this and to go forward. The only option is an applicant, if we're following RFP procedures correctly, that actually has a property now. And one or two do. And so I think we need to follow the process that we've set out, that we agreed upon, and go to the next qualified applicant, which is Elk Island. And that's what I would vote for.
Rob?
So I would be against this motion.
Rob, and then Eric.
Joel, could you make your, clarify your statement because it was really all over the place with some, two or three different misspoken parts.
The bottom line was both applicants serve drug addiction, both treat drug and substance abuse, and they both will treat it afterwards regardless of who gets the grant. Mint and Bernie's group, where Mint's working with them, Elk Island, I shouldn't get into Mint has, there's a referral process. And so you refer to other servicers in the community when they have a service that your patients can use or your people can use. And there's been 130 people reply, referred from Mint to OnTrack for substance abuse since January 1st.
And then you mentioned other groups that, the number for other groups that had also referred?
There was no referrals from Pathways, though they offered good treatment. And actually, OnTrack also referred some patients to Pathways because that was their preference with their religious orientation and what the treatment would be. But anyway, the bottom line is that Mint and Bernie's application does offer adequate, very adequate substance abuse treatment.
Great, thank you. Then with that clarification, I'd just like to state that, you know, one of the options that Stephanie says obtained final offers from all applicants, well, I thought that's what we got on October 9th. We got final applications, or final offers from all applicants. And then at that point, Pathways, or on the 20th, Pathways was chosen, but given two weeks essentially to prove that they had a property secured. They failed in that endeavor. And so we've already gotten their final, their last final offer. We got it October 9th, and then we talked about it October 20th. They're now disqualified as far as I'm concerned. And then I think at this point, the question is, does Council want to move forward in a different direction? And that's, that would be, I feel, the only fair thing to do at this point. And we have a, what appears to be a really good applicant that has, despite claims to the contrary, some counselors have said that Elk Island and/or Mint, you know, or actually some counselors have said Pathways would be the only one that would offer drug treatment and so forth and would refer. And from what Joel's statistics are just now, we found that that's completely been debunked, that the Mint Elk Island combination would be referring people as they have this year. So I would imagine too that since Mint really primarily is dealt with medical, and yet just in the people that they've seen, they've referred 130 people for drug treatment, I would imagine in coming years, if they actually were part of shelter situation, that number could increase three or four times. I mean, it might be many hundreds of people that they're likely to refer next year. So I'm not in favor at all of giving Pathways or anyone else more time because they already had their final offer on October 9th. They were given 14 extra days from our last workshop to prove to the city and prove to the city attorney that they actually had a property. They failed. In addition to which, I'd just like to correct or add to one thing that Stephanie said. She said that Commissioner Ron Smith issued a statement that said that they were not in negotiations. It wasn't just Commissioner Smith. The board, the county commissioner board, on two occasions issued statements that said that there were no negotiations on the property. So, you know, Pathways is just way, 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 way off the track on their property and the presentations that they made to Council have proven not to be truthful. So to me, they should be disqualified and we should move forward with a different option.
I have Eric and then Kathleen.
May I respond on the revision to proposals? So I do, just to make sure that everyone's clear, we actually can, under procurement law, obtain a last best final offer from applicants. There are rules that relate to how that happens. You essentially do what we have done, which is hear from everyone, and then at that point, Council can set a, what they call a competitive range, which is basically, if you have a whole bunch of applications, you can find that natural breaking point or you can have established it in your RFP that says anything over this score will allow revision to applications to get that last best final offer. So it is allowed under contracting rules.
Thank you, Stephanie. And I had Eric and then Kathleen.
So just to reply to a couple of the things that were said here, I wanted to ask Stephanie, as far as when the applicants put in their applications, did any of them have property, formalized property bought or in place to where we can say fairly that all candidates did not have a property lined up?
Technically, all three of the applicants that were not disqualified did not meet the requirements in the RFP regarding securing a property. One was missing actual signatures. One was missing a confirmation from the landowner. They had a letter from essentially somebody that had permission to use the property, but not an actual letter. And then the third, we all know that the county board had not yet finished its discussions, at least to some extent at that point. So none of them actually met the criteria.
Thank you. Can you repeat that again, please?
None of the three met the criteria.
And I have another few things to talk about here. All right, thank you, Stephanie. Everybody knows that we have a drug problem here in Oregon, specifically here in Grants Pass. Now, there were some discussions about treatment programs. That's great. Treatment is treatment. But when we have candidates that, in my opinion, are lackluster compared to some others, after reading over the packets, they do not have incentive programs like one specific candidate does. The incentive program is what is needed to get into this, to get people out of the drug programs. If we're just, if we're just going to have treatment programs that are not enforced, we have that already. We have that over here across the street. They have the options to go do their treatment programs wherever they want at free will. That's what we have right now in these temporary resting sites. It's anarchy, it's chaos. We've heard from the police chief, we've heard from, everybody knows, it's right there in everybody's face as far as the drug problem goes. So that's why, in my mind, I think that's what we have to go after. That's what we need to focus in on. If we're just going to do more of the same, that's exactly what's going to happen. We're going to get more of the same, people are going to get paid, and nothing's going to happen. It's very frustrating. And then people are going to, our citizens deserve better. These people in the resting sites deserve better. We need a solution, and more of the same is not a good solution. These people have drug problems, they have issues. They're going to stay stagnant where they are. So that's why I think that it should go to the highest scored individuals. Now, Joel, you said one thing, that treatment, you know, we're talking about treatment here. Again, I want to reiterate, treatment is one thing if it's just allowing people to do what they need to do. But having an incentive program is completely different. And it's not forcing anybody, it's incentivizing them. So and if we don't have that, we're just going to keep on going round and round. We're going to have these issues. We're going to continue to have the issues. And then we're going to wonder, what's going on? Well, we've been at this for the last, who knows how long, decade, I want to say. How many more decades is it going to take before we get this straightened out? So that's why I'm going to obtain final offers for all applicants and re-score them. That's what my, that's what I want to do. That's what, that's the motion I made, and that's what my preference is. And I encourage the rest of the Council to do the same. Thank you.
And Kathleen?
Yeah, Stephanie, I don't think you would have allowed that as an option if it wasn't a valid thing, that everybody had something to upgrade with their final offers. So, listening to the city attorney and seeing that everybody needs a fair chance to upgrade their properties, I too, I'm going to go with that second option to make it fair and to make it, I have no problem doing the work, re-scoring. Yeah, it might take a little bit of effort, but that's okay. I'm willing to do that to get the best applicant that I believe will do the best job.
And I wanted just to have a comment as well, and then I saw Rob's hand. When we scored all the applicants, there was one who was far, not just a little bit, but far above everyone else, and it's because of their whole package. And I, we don't have our scoring sheets in front of us. I wish that we did, but I'm, so this is just going to be from memory. I think Joel was talking about some referrals. I think he may be talking some apples and oranges here somewhat because he's talking about an organization that formed really for the purposes of creating this whole program, and they're new. But I'm not sure that Joel mentioned referrals or the services that have been provided underneath that new parent organization, and those would be organizations like U-Turn for Christ and Calvary Chapel and others. So I think it was a little bit of an unfair referral example, just from my thinking. And I think it shows from the scoring who, which applicant this dais chose. And I guess I would also say that there's also one applicant who's been hard at work at this publicly, putting themselves out there with all the slings and arrows. And some of those slings and arrows have come from people who are actually voting on this. So, and they're out there in public, they can be brought forth, and they can easily be brought forth to show people. So I really admire that. That makes me think they're the best applicant even more. Although, I would, I am also for this second option because it would only be right to offer all applicants the right to, or the ability to put in their next best offer. So I do, at this point, have no reason to believe, and I could change. I've been accused of scoring with bias. I did not. I scored each application as it was in front of me, based on questions that I asked applicants when they were here. And I did change some scores. So that's a little bit of a digression. But there was one applicant that was far and above all the others, and they have been serving the community for a long time. And they, well, to finish that last thought that I started before, I talked about I didn't score with bias. That shows me that they can do it. That they have been in this community, oh my gosh, taking such unfair criticism and accusations hurled at them, that it just, it's amazing to me what they have put up with. And so that is to be admired. And they did it with grace, and they still continue to show that grace and continue to serve the community without slinging the mud back in the direction from whence it came. And so, and also a couple of other notes that I took here. I remember when scoring one of the applicants that was talked about here today, that they only had one MOU. And as Rob mentioned, that particular MOU, they are mostly, they, and I could be wrong, I don't have the application in front of me, but they are mostly for medical help, which is great, wonderful, wonderful service in the community. And I think both applicants that have been talked about here today are, have the same MOU. So there is, there's two applicants that have the same people who are going to be helping them, but one of them, we scored the highest eight-person panel after a grueling, almost one-year process. And to try to get out on a technicality or to unfairly compare them to, on this referral basis, which didn't make sense to me, doesn't make sense. So the only, and according to Stephanie, we are able to go forward, it's common, to obtain a final, last offer. It's the right thing to do. Getting rid of one of the applicants right now, I think would show, would show bias. It would be a shame to show that bias. I would be ashamed to show that bias on the dais.
Shut up.
Oh, Clint, we can hear you. So Clint's a little bit unhappy with me explaining that, but I'm sorry Clint had to do it. So, and if you-
Oh, no, so, no, I'm sorry, I didn't know I had my mic on. I was talking to my relative that walked into the room. They were trying to talk to me. It was not, I didn't know I had my mic on. That was not going to reference to anybody. I totally apologize.
Good.
I mentioned my mic off, I apologize.
All right.
I was talking to my relative that's in my room.
Well, okay, so, well, thank you, Mayor, and I'm glad that you are here. And so if you had any comments, make sure that you let Karen know so I can, so I can make sure you get your comments in as well. So that is why I will be for the second option, and because all of the applicants deserve the same opportunity. We have scored one applicant far and above the others, and so they deserve to still be in this running while the others do as well. And with that, I would see, if there are any other comments, I see that Rob is, Rob has a comment, and then Joel.
Short one.
Yeah, I have a really difficult time agreeing with you, Victoria, that the, we would be dismissing one candidate on a technicality. That candidate claimed they were in property negotiations, they were not, they don't have a property. And any score and any points that any member on the dais gave them for their site, which is, they have no site, those should have been zeros. They had, any budget that they created for that specific property would be meaningless. Any, any services provided from that exact property or other partners on that exact property are meaningless also. So yes, they received the highest score based on a completely flawed application and a completely flawed premise. And that's not a technicality, that's major. Because without a site, you do nothing. The bottom line is, is that the state law says, as interpreted by the local judge, that we have to have 150 spots for people. Okay? If you don't have a property- If you don't have a property, you have zero spots for people. Matter of, matter of fact, the rest of this, as Eric talks about, with regards to whether it's drug treatment, whether it's a change of life, whether it's incentive, those are all excellent bonuses. But the bottom line is, what we are dealing with as a council is we have to have 150 spots. That's actually the only thing that legally we have to deal with. And without a property, that, that scoring deserves a zero, because we can't do any of that without a property. And that's the one thing we, that's the one thing we've been mandated to do. That's not a technicality. That's as major as it gets. You know, with regards to my concerns with actually Pathways, it goes so far beyond this glaring omission or glaring weakness on their application of not having a property, which again, precludes them from doing the one thing the judge mandated us to do, is have space for 150 people. They can't do it without a property. They were given an extra two weeks to come up with a final best offer. Show us they had a property. They failed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, they were already given a final two weeks, an extra two weeks to come up with their final offer. They didn't do it. If one of the others was chosen, if Elk Island was chosen, they could also be given a period of time to prove that they had a property under agreement that would be closed on once they got the grant. That would actually be fair, because that would actually be putting them in the same exact position that the council gave to Pathways. That would be an identical offer that the council gave to Pathways. Do you have a period of time to prove to the city attorney that you actually have control of a property? That would be an identical offer. That would be fair. But, you know, I've been concerned with, you know, at first it appeared as if some of the statements may have been just a slip of the tongue. But several months ago, we heard from Pathways that they had a, an agreement with the Vine Street property owner, and they'd had an earnest, they put earnest money down. Okay? The property owner said that wasn't true. They then made another untrue representation when they used their logo on some promotional material, the city logo, rather, our city logo on their promotional material, saying we were partners. That wasn't true. And then again, we've got this situation where they claim they were in negotiations. Not only did they claim their negotiations, they said that both parties feel that likely those negotiations will be finalized within 30 days. Again, not true. Not true, not true, not true. And I, again, they had their, their, their opportunity to make their final best offer. But last, at the last, the, the county commissioner meeting gave me the most pause of anything that Pathways has said or done, when Pastor Dar said that they have data collecting capability to determine whether homeless are not from our city. And if not, you know, they'll get them out. They don't belong here. They also said, and he claimed to be quoting the Bible, that if you don't work, you don't eat. And to me, those are completely antithetical to the law that House Bill 3115 created. You know, all that will take, I, I just can't believe that Disability Rights Oregon is not already on those statements, because those are against the law. Those are not what 3115 and the interpretation that the local judge has said about 3115. They will not allow them to throw people out if they're not from Grants Pass. They will not allow them to force people to work in order to eat. And to me, since Pastor Dar said that at a public meeting on a video that's memorialized forever, all that will take now is someone in a camp run by, run by him, on the flimsiest shred of evidence to say, I wasn't treated fairly. They made me do more work than somebody else. Or a disabled person will say, that, that work that they wanted me to do was beyond my capability. I mean, a judge can look at past, what Pastor Dar said he was going to do, and there could be a claim, even if it's, even if it's based on kind of flimsy evidence, that somebody says, you know, I'm not from around here, you know, they're harder on me. Well, guess what? We're going to be back in court. That injunction will be invoked again. We're going to lose control of our parks again. And that will be on anyone on this council right now that votes for anything associated with Pastor Dar after he made those statements on video at a public meeting that violate the law. Big mistake. They had their chance to optimize their offer. We need to give Elk Island its chance to optimize its offer. That would be fair, because they're both getting the same exact opportunity. Anything else is biased. And I would also say, my opinion is that when someone who watched all the, the six hours, sat through the six hours, and ended up with a score of 97 to 15 for second place finisher, or 97 to 15, I have a really hard time believing that was unbiased.
Okay, I believe that we have the mayor online, and then we are going to have Kathleen very quickly, oh, and, oh, I apologize, it's Mayor, and then Joel, then Kathleen, and then I see Indra. But very quickly, oh, I'll just, I'll reserve it. So, Mayor?
Yeah, this is Mayor Shurf, and hopefully you can hear me all right. I just wanted to weigh in a little bit and encourage council to make the proper decision. And your discussion is, seems to be in-depth and broad, which I appreciate. Just to reiterate, as Stephanie did say, that all applicants officially didn't have a letter of intent to purchase or secure a property, so we did kind of bring that forward. One thing I did want to point out is, is it seems like a lot of people are trying to beat up on one applicant because they stated they were in negotiation. As you all know, when you negotiate a property or try to solicit a property from a government entity like the city or the county, all negotiations have to be done in the public venture, except for once you get to the actual pricing. So realistically, when an applicant says they're in negotiation with the county, and they're involved in public meetings and requesting and talking about that piece of property, that's officially negotiations with a government entity. So that's, that's something just to keep in mind. And, you know, I do appreciate your guys' communications and your, your discussion on this topic. Rob, you did bring up some, pointing out that you felt that the scoring was biased. You know, I don't want to get in the weeds here, but I actually went through and scored the three applicants, as part of the scoring process. I actually scored them each individual question on the scoring sheet. And without bias, I looked at that to see if the information was actually provided by that, that applicant. And there are a number of counselors that I could question any and all of your scoring, because there was counselors that gave wild scores that were, didn't even align with the information within an application that was presented. So this is a very passionate topic. You, you can't deny that none, none of you counselors went into this without bias on any, any bit of it. It's, it's been on public display for months now. At this point, if I believe that you guys should make a decision and go forth with, with strength and, you know, stick with what you guys have already decided. Providing an opportunity for all the applicants to give their best and final is not outside the norm. I think it would give one last solidification that you guys went through the process properly, without doubt. And if you have to re-score them, great, do it. Put this thing to bed. I think that's the best course of action. You're going to have, you're going to have negative connotation, connotation on any decision that you make. But I think the fairest course of action going forward would be to, you know, afford an opportunity to all three candidates to give their best and final and re-score it. And as a council, you can prove to the public that you guys did everything you possibly could to come to a final decision in a proper, fair manner. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have Joel, then Kathleen, and then Indra.
I think we're about ready for a vote, because we keep repeating ourselves, which is, that's, that's hard on the audience and us. Anyway, I'd just like to say real quick, in, in response to Eric, Eric, I respect what you say. OnTrak has transitional housing, and they also have employment program. In fact, they, they're a transitional housing program. They have houses in the community where, after they go through the treatment and they, you know, and they have social workers that work with them. And it's not, it's not. And, and they'll refer to, to Pathways as well, because they have a legitimate program. So it's, everybody's working together, and afterwards, we're just talking, we're talking money here, which makes it a little divisive, but afterwards, hopefully, everybody still works together. So I think we're ready to vote.
Kathleen?
I just wanted to say that I don't appreciate the redundancy, and it feels like a filibuster going on here, where some people are taking so much time to explain their, anyway. But I want to say that I don't believe that Pathways would have come forth with a property if they hadn't had some kind of negotiation going. That just is, that just doesn't make sense to me. So something happened with the county that I'm not quite sure, but have a good guess. But anyway, for whatever reason, and I think that was totally, and even the Vine Street property, that was, you know, it not in this grant process. It was in the city buying a property for the applicant. So it's, it's apples and oranges. We can't even compare what was stated earlier. So I agree, we need to vote and get this done with.
Indra, and then I also saw Eric.
It's interesting how we're so anxious to vote and move on now without giving counselors time to speak and calling them for filibustering when they're just stating their opinion. The negotiation, you know, I don't know if, if Counselor Crone's saying that the commissioners were lying, but the commissioners did put out a statement that said they were not in negotiations. So I guess you can take that however you want it. I, I would look at that statement as the truth, but maybe that statement wasn't according to what you're saying. Best and final offer, that was brought up at the last RFP to give a best and final offer, and for whatever reason, it was not looked at as a consideration. So I find this very interesting, that now we're able to consider it when we weren't before, because we would have been doing this weeks ago and had a decision if we were able to do that before. So I don't know why that's on the table now and it wasn't before. Nothing is more of the same. Counselor Schlegel mentioned that, more of the same. I see each applicant with their individual strengths and weaknesses. I mean, they all have strengths, and they all have weak parts, and that's what we were judging them on. So it's not more of the same, because when we select one of the applicants, it will be a managed site, which is totally different from what we have here and in a different location. And they are all using the same referral. They've all said that. They're going to go to the same referral sources that do their, their, their specialties, and that's what's going to happen. Finally, I do want to, I have to address the scores after Counselor Marshall spoke about an appearance of bias that was not there. So when you have Mayor Shurf going to a forum earlier in the spring promoting Pathways, when you have Counselor Marshall attempting to make a motion, I'm not sure when that was, several months ago, to give Pathways a partnership with the city regardless of property, okay, that happened. How can you say that there isn't some kind of bias in there? Okay, Mayor, Mayor Shurf is right. We all do have some bias. But the scoring was ridiculous, and I think everyone sees that the scoring is ridiculous. So when there's no property, how do you score on the location? You're scoring on a fictitional location. And to get 100 points, I scored, I, I did score as best I could. I scored Pathways in the 50s, I don't remember, regardless of the zeros they got for property and budget, because I was really scoring them. Do you know who I scored 14 was the one that didn't even make the cut? Because I thought, I'm going to practice on this one. They even got 14 from me. So a 97, 15 is, to me, insane. So when you are proud of, let's take the highest score, I'm sorry, how do you take the highest score when obviously some counselors are putting super high scores with nothing behind it? And super low scores to affect the scoring? So while this process was transparent, okay, it still has a lot of problems with the scoring. And so at this point, I wouldn't even consider the scoring. I would just look at the interviews and what they have. Because I think we wasted a lot of time going through interviews and questions just to come down to this, where, where several counselors just want us to move it on to give another chance to someone. I, I just think it's horrible. And I think we should do the right thing, which is to go to the next applicant with property and work with them. Thank you.
Very quickly, I will say again, not to do a back and forth, but my score, my score was scored based on interview questions from the applicants. So I just wanted to point that out. And, but I think that our city manager would like to have a word here, so go ahead.
Great, thank you. Council, I greatly appreciate the, the dialogue that's occurred today. I know that there's a lot of passion behind this, both from a community perspective and from council policy perspective. And there's a lot of information that's been going out there and explanation of individuals' potential stance on future direction. But I think really trying to focus on value-added comments that will ultimately get us to, to some direction from you is what we're looking for. Focusing on what really is going to be best moving forward, and, and maybe focusing on forward discussion, because we can talk probably a lot more about things that have been out there or things that we've done. But if we can move the discussion with value-added, looking at what direction will move us forward in the most positive way would probably be helpful and get us to a conclusion that we'll hopefully be able to provide clear direction to staff to proceed with.
And I think I saw Eric, and did you still have a comment? Eric?
Yes, thank you. We have a drug problem, okay? This is the issue. I heard that, and thank you, Joel, for the comments, I wanted to respond to that. Pathways to Stability does have many MOUs that they will be able to use and have other, other groups, other nonprofits to work with. So they're not just by themselves an, an old entity that just is, is going willy-nilly. So there are MOUs, there are other programs that they'll be able to, to help. They all came together, they brought the other nonprofits together with signatures to help. And it's, it's not very funny, Indra, but thank you. This is a serious discussion. We have, again, we have drug problems here in Grants Pass. And for us to just, again, I'm going to say more of the same, because that's what's happening. A lot of these other organizations, they're, they're just there for the housing, they're just there for various things, and there, there's no incentive program. there for various things, and there's no incentive program. So why have we, why has this been going on for so long? Because there are no solutions. It just keeps on going. And for Rob to say that we need 150 people, yes, that's exactly right. We need something that will help these 150 people that are out here in these temporary resting sites without any kind of motivation, without anything. We need a change, and I think everybody knows it. Everyone knows that. These organizations, these other organizations have been around for so long. What have they done? We keep continuing to see the same problems. And we're going to see, we're going to continue to see the same things if something doesn't change. And we can go round and round here, we can get laughed at by various individuals, but this is serious business, and it needs to change. Thank you.
All right, so I'm going to take a roll call, and I will begin with, oh, but Indra wants to have another comment. Go ahead.
I just, thank you. I just want to be clear, I wasn't, I chuckled because Counselor Crone fed you words that you then said. That's why I chuckled, not because of the not seriousness of the topic. I also do, I think, want to defend myself a little bit about the perception of bias that I might have that Counselor Marshall said. I scored that sheet appropriately, and if Pathways had had a property, they scored 52 or four, I don't know, had had a property, they would have been one of my top scoring, for sure. Because what I want is a group, I want the best, and I want something that works, and I wanted to do a fair job with the RFP and with the scoring. That's where I was. And sadly, they didn't, and so I couldn't score that. So I just wanted to point that out as well. Thank you.
I saw Eric.
I wanted to ask Stephanie, when we were scoring these score sheets, and as everybody knows by now, I scored 100 points because they were the best qualified individuals, in my opinion, after reading their thick pamphlet compared to the other less thinner pamphlets submitted by the other organizations. I wanted to ask, at the time we were scoring, were we told, or were we supposed to score with what we had going on at that time, before the commissioners made their decisions?
Yes, scores were supposed to be based on the information in your possession at the time of scoring.
So what was that for Pathways? Did they have a property at that time?
None of the three applicants had secured a property at that time.
Thank you.
So I would just say very quickly, because none of the applicants had a property secured, it would be correct in stating that if councilors scored one applicant lower for not having a property scored, that would indicate bias. And because none of them did, and we received this in a memo, it's been repeated several times here, I think that what we're getting at, and the spirit of Counselor Schlegel's motion that he made, is to obtain final offers from all applicants and to rescore them so that we are absolutely certain that we have given every applicant equal opportunity to give their best. And so I think that's the direction, it's definitely the direction that I would like to go. And there's no reason not to do that. It would just strengthen the applications, I believe, from all of our applicants. So that is the way that I will be scoring, and if we have new information, so maybe I think our city manager was kind of telling us, we want to maybe turn it around to a vote on the motion. I think that's probably a good idea, but I did see Rob, and I don't know if he wanted to, if he had some new information to share.
Just very, very quickly, I just needed to respond to one thing that Clint said when Clint indicated that he felt that there'd been bias for many months, possibly on the part of the council. And I just had to, I don't know if Clint is, being out of town is really up on everything local, but last week, when Jeremy Ford spoke to the school board, he very clearly said that the mayor had promised him a property. So Clint has been biased for many, many, many months on this. So Clint, please don't point fingers at other people that probably even more accurately apply to you. But I have nothing else, nothing new. Thank you.
All right, so we are going to take a roll call vote, and, oh, Mayor Clit would like to have something he would like to say. Go ahead, Mayor.
This is Mayor Shurf. Yeah, thank you, Rob. I'm actually thrilled that you brought up that school board video, because Indra also brought that up to me previously. And if you actually watch the video and you look at it, Jeremy says the same thing that he said in a lot of his interactions with the county and us, is, he didn't say that I promised him a property. He said that he'd been working with the mayor and the council since February, since they started on this venture. And he did, in that school board meeting, say that he'd been working with the council, which he had been, because we were working on trying to put a property together, and he was desperately trying to get us to put a property together for an organization to run a shelter. So this isn't the time to start throwing stones at each other just to get your little soundbites in. I think you guys need to get on with the vote and get this done for the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I was also noticing that that was under a different process, so, but we're going to move on to the roll call vote, and I will start with Joel.
Does yes mean, can you tell us what yes and no means?
Oh, okay, so let me repeat. So the motion is to obtain final offers from all applicants and to rescore them, and our city attorney said then the parameters of that will be brought forward to us afterward, correct?
We'll go over the details if that's the route the county chooses.
Yes, okay. So we'll start with, on the end of the dais, Counselor Pell. Oh, Counselor Riker?
No.
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 Yes.
No.
And I vote yes, and, but that would mean that the motion fails. And I would add, okay, so we are open to a new discussion, and we will, I will move on to Joel.
We really do need to move on with a united community. I'm going to make a motion to move forward with Elk Island.
And any discussion? Joel?
So I learned a long time ago, it doesn't make any difference what you do if the community's not united. It won't work. And I also know that if the community's united, it doesn't make any difference what we do, it will work. So we need to build a community that supports each other regardless of who gets the money. Everybody's already doing the work, and as we move forward and we make things even better, that's what I'm going to be working towards. So thank you.
And I saw Eric and Kathleen, but very quickly, I will be voting against this because it is the wrong thing to do. It's the wrong thing for our community. There will be, in my opinion, the same problems with the property on this applicant. During the, during the application process, when I asked the applicant, are you going to move here? The applicant said no. So that means the applicant is just retrofitting Conex boxes and leaving them there, and then it's Mint who's going to take over. Mint does wonderful things in the community, but that is nowhere near the MOUs that the best qualified applicant had. They had, I think, I don't remember how many, four or five MOUs, maybe up to seven, I can't remember, the application is not there. I think with the trashing that the applicant, our highest-scoring applicant had from people on the dais here in social media, I have them available on my phone to read, I won't do that now, but they will be brought forward later. I think that the highest-scoring applicant will have, definitely have, a reason to challenge should this decision go forward. And I think they probably will be successful legally. So it's the wrong way to go. You can't be a unified community when you are trying to unfairly dismiss your highest and best applicant just because you don't like them for reasons that have nothing to do with their application. And those particular details will come out in the public, so some of you probably know what I'm talking about. So I would, I am the definite no. There was bias in the scoring, and obviously, it was just brought up here now. And so an applicant who is apparently not going to be able to bring forth their best offer, should this motion pass, definitely would have grounds, in my opinion, and not speaking as an attorney, but as a scorer who went through the process to challenge. So, and, but I believe, I also saw Kathleen's hand, and then I saw Eric, and then Seth.
Well, I just want to speak to the united community. We haven't had unification with a community on any property. In fact, nobody wants this in their backyard, if we're honest. Now, maybe we just haven't heard from some of the businesses around the property on Sixth Street, Southwest Sixth Street, but you better believe we will. I mean, nobody wants this in their backyard, and I believe that's where the crux is of getting community agreement. So I don't know what you're referring to, Joel, with community agreement. I don't see any agreement at all yet, anywhere.
And Eric?
We're going to transfer the problems from here down to Bymart area there, where the temporary resting site, it's going to, it's not going to be an encampment, it's going to be another temporary resting site. We're going to have the same drug problems because there's going to be no incentive program. I don't even know if Bymart has approved of it yet, but apparently they have, apparently they have a management signing off on it. I heard some other names that approved of it. But essentially, we're going to have another temporary resting site that they're going to call a, basically, I don't know what, what managed site that we have down there right now. And I don't even know if the electrical was fixed, the dilapidated building down there that they're going to be using as well. I mean, we're going to have these containers just completely looking like what we have here at the temporary resting sites. Now, they might call it a managed place, but the bottom line is, a lot of these people are drug addicted. They're going to allow them to come in while they're drug addicted and not have anything, any sign of moving forward. They're not, they're going to have to do this when they hit rock bottom. They're not, there's not going to be an incentive program. So I just want people to keep that in mind. We're going to take the $1.1 million, and that, or whatever the final tally was, give it to them, and we're going to continue to see these things happen. We're paying $400,000 minimum for these temporary resting sites here right now. The idea was to be able to stop that and have somewhat of a solution to where we can fix these things and not continue to go down the road of the homeless industrial complex, which is exactly what's going to end up happening.
All right, any other comments? I see Seth, and then Indra.
Yeah, I'll make it short. I just wanted to say, you know, that I judged and scored all these applications as fairly as I could. I think there's a lot of back and forth on who had a property, who didn't have a property. It's also, I think, personal opinion on if someone had a property or not. And, you know, I, based on what I read, it seemed like they had potential property. So anyways, I think the reality with all these is they're all a risk, it's all a gamble. We don't really know what's going to happen until, you know, these things are fully operational in six months from now. I have concerns for all the applications. I mean, Elk Island knows that. I've voiced those, and that's okay, and I've gotten some answers back from people in the community, and, you know, I'm going to hold them accountable, just like I would Pathways or whoever else potentially could get this grant. I mean, that's just, that's just reality, and I think we all should. I think removing the camps from downtown is huge for the people who live up here, first and foremost, and, you know, just for downtown. You know, I'm a huge proponent of downtown. It's a tourism drive for this city, and, you know, we just need, we just need a bubble. I mean, this camp moves it closer to my ward, which, that's, that's fine, right? I mean, we're all going to have to take, you know, some of the burden. And so, you know, the only other, this is more of a suggestion, thought for if this passes, and Elk Island may be interested in this as well, but it seems like they want to do most of the construction building and the build-out phase, which is, which is great, that's fine. I don't know if their desire is to operate long-term, so maybe that's a discussion of whether, you know, Mint takes over that contract on the operational side. And again, this is, I'm just spitballing ideas here, because I think it seems like, based on the application, that Mint would be the operations wing for the most part. I could be wrong, but I'm just throwing that out there.
Rick?
I know we've been dealing this, dealing with this for a long time, and I think we need to move forward, make a decision. I guess my biggest wish would be for all the organizations to get together and work together, and by that, I think it would be a great healing process for the community as well. Thank you.
Rob?
Yeah, I agree with everything Rick just said, and probably almost, almost everything or everything that Seth said as well. And I just wanted to add something that, the last time I spoke with Sam Engel at Rogue Retreat, when he told me that the community needs to realize that whoever was to get this grant, it's not going to go perfectly in the beginning, and the community needs to know that. And whoever is running it, whoever receives the grant, also needs to know that there's going to require ongoing assessment and reassessment and minor tweaks as things go along, because you'll always, as he said, there's always different people in the camps, but also there's different people working, whether it's for Mint or whether it's for one of these other groups. And there's different personalities, and there's different understandings and different strengths and weaknesses of every group. So the community's got to realize that the beginning, it may not be perfect, and the, whoever the, but it needs to, but it can improve, which is what's proven to happen over in Medford. From the police department over there, Rogue Retreat has done nothing but improve year by year and gotten basically higher and higher respect from law enforcement over there. And that comes from who was former mayor, former police chief, and county commissioner, Sparassino, basically said that things improved. And, but again, it's going to be better in year two than it is in year one, I would hope. I would hope that's true for almost any, any operation. But I'm pretty convinced, based especially on what Mint has been able to do with the number of referrals that they do, and the fact that they've been able to... number of referrals that they do, and the fact that they've been able to do that all with, with no Grants Pass direct taxpayer dollars. When that was yanked from them, they still did not go under. They improved their buildings. They met building code after that, even though Eric talks, asked questions about electrical or whatever. The fact is, they, they improved their buildings to the point where they were up to code, and they did that all without our help. So that's a group that I would have a lot of confidence in moving forward, because they've proven to be able to do it, and they did it without Grants Pass taxpayer money. So again, I'm sure that whoever gets it will, will do a good job in the beginning, or likely will do a good job in the beginning, will likely will improve it. And, and I, as a citizen of Grants Pass, I understand that.
There was, it's been mentioned on the dais many times, Mint. Mint was not the applicant, but it obviously, Mint was the applicant. This is my opinion, and it's one of the reasons why I felt it wasn't fair to score one applicant based on who the actual applicant was. So, and that was based on the questions that I asked during the interview, if that, if the applicant was going to stay here. And I believe that this city deserves an applicant who is committed to, who lives here and wants to stay here. There were two other applicants that we scored, who, that, that was true. And they were, they live here, and they were going to create the program, did create the program, or were in the process of creating the program, to make the community that they lived in better. And one applicant was going to retrofit Connex boxes and was not going to remain as the, as the applicant. It was always going to be handed over to another entity. And I don't think that that is, I don't think that's best for our community. So that's a serious reason. It's not a, a light reason or a small reason. And it's important to our community that the best applicant get this contract. And the best applicant is somebody who lives here and knows the community, and scored the highest. So it would be, so I would, once again, I would be against this motion for all those reasons and many more. The community is not going to come together based on a minority just stomping their feet until they got their way, is my opinion, and, and setting aside the best applicant. So, and I think now we have Indra.
Yes, I, I'm glad about this going forward and just making progress and getting a site and, and starting, starting something. I believe that the majority of the community will be very relieved that we have made a decision and that we are moving forward with a plan. I disagree that it's a minority, and there are amazing people in our community. I've lived here a long time, and amazing organizations. And I know that whoever we would have chosen, the community will get behind it and will do their best to make this a success. And that's, I think, what Joel was speaking about. We just all need to come together, work together, and, and do the best that we can, not only for our community members living here, but also for the people that are in this unmanaged camp. And I'm very, very hopeful today. Thank you.
I have Rob, and then I have Eric.
Yeah, it's my understanding that the reason, when the applicants are making their presentations, the reason that Cassie Leach was actually allowed to speak at all is because she was a partner. And otherwise, she would have just been some member of the audience that shouldn't have been allowed to speak. But that was my understanding at the time, that she and Elk Island were going to be partners on this, in the same way that Jeremy Ford and Pastor Dar also spoke, because they were principals in that operation. As far as, you know, living here, my understanding is, is that Pastor Dar doesn't live in Grants Pass, Jeremy Ford's not a stakeholder in Grants Pass. To me, those aren't the most important things, but in any event, just, just trying to be, just trying to set the record straight.
All right. We're going to have Eric, and, go ahead.
So I just, I find it peculiar, you know, Rob was talking about getting a possible lawsuit when one of the applicants has a current lawsuit that is, that is happening up in, in another, in another city. So if we're looking at lawsuits being threatened, I mean, what, what's to stop? Where is it going to end? So, hey, that's all.
All right. I see no other comments. We'll take a roll call vote. Rob?
Again, what was the motion, and what's a yes and a no mean?
The yes means to disqualify Pathways and move forward with Elk Island.
Okay, so a yes vote is to disqualify and move forward with Elk Island. I vote yes.
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 Absolute no.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
An absolute no for me as well, but the motion passes, and so, does, do we have direction?
The one thing I would ask for is when you would like me to bring this back, if we're going to do the exact same thing that we did for, excuse me, for Pathways, then the schedule would be as follows. Notice of intent would be heard for, before council on November 19th, so essentially, we would just be bumping deadlines out two weeks. November 10th is when I would have to have a draft agreement ready with Elk Island, which gives us a week to do that. At the, at or before that time, they would also have to provide that verification of property, the same thing that we required of Pathways. These timelines would then have the protest period expiring November 26th. We would have to have an executed contract by December 1st. That is a little bit longer than the previous one, because otherwise, the contract execution would land on Black Friday. So we would, it would be a holiday. So it would be the Monday after the holiday. And then that would lead us to the six-month window for completion being on or before June 1st. So if that's acceptable to council, we can issue the addendum for that schedule.
Mayor Shurf?
Yes, thank you. This is Mayor Shurf. Just to clarify, if the direction going forward is for Elk Island to present their actual letter of intent signed by the property owner previous, the next meeting, is that, that's a clarification question?
If we're going to do this the same way that we did with Pathways, they would have to provide that at or before the same time we had a draft agreement prepared to bring to council. So we wouldn't move forward with anything without having that in my hand.
Excellent. Thank you for the clarification.
So without any objection, I think that that is the direction.
All right. Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is a work plan third quarter update.
When I was, I pulled this up, council, that was a very long discussion, and I greatly appreciate council providing direction to staff to move forward, and we'll try to move forward with that policy decision that you made. You may want to get up and shake off whatever, if you need a minute to, to move around as I'm pulling this up. I sometimes do the hokey pokey when I've had a tough discussion, just to shake things, just shake things around a little bit. We're getting into celebration mode. I mean, I'm trying to, I know. All right. Good afternoon, council. We are shifting gears from a very deep conversation and discussion and decision-making that you had to make to something a little more lighthearted and positive, and that is a celebration of, and an update of what we've done within the strategic plan that you've established. And this is our third quarter report. So what I have to report to you today is a combination of efforts that you have provided through your policy direction, that staff through our professionalism have been able to implement with the assistance of also the community, a number of our advisory committees, and others that have helped make our strategic plan so successful. So with that, I'll move right into it. As you are aware, our strategic plan is much more than just a plan that sits on the shelf. With our strategic plan, we also have an associated work plan. You have your work plan up on the dais. It is about 35 pages long, and so that really goes to show some of the detail that's provided within the strategic plan on how we get those things accomplished. We have a process that definitely starts with council providing us with policy direction and where we should go in the future, which is then followed up by us developing a work plan, which provides the meat and potatoes about how we get things accomplished, which is then followed by allocation of resources through the budget process, and that is ultimately adopted. And then we monitor for success, and we move forward and continue that process. This is where we are right now, as we're providing you with some information on monitoring and reporting our successes. We have a smart plan and smart goals, as you'll see in the work plan itself. They're specific, they're measurable. We understand how we're going to achieve those, where they are assigned, what type of resources are required to do it, and approximately how much time it's going to take to get those things accomplished. Through our goal setting, you have established five goals. There are eight outcomes that support those goals, with 29 expected results, and 93 different initiatives currently right now, and those do fluctuate throughout the year. There is so much that I can, that I can state. Like I mentioned, it is in your work plan, the 35 pages. But what I'm going to do is I try to take some of the highlights to show you just some of the successes that we have. Please take your time to review the work plan and provide any questions or comments as we move forward in the future. First thing I'd like to highlight is just from a standpoint of trying to make sure we listen to you and listen to our constituents. And one of our goals is to continue to deliver and enhance high-quality, effective police, fire, and emergency preparedness services. And one example is something that we've done through recruitment of a police cadet program. We're able to increase patrols in the central business district, which is something that the community and council has identified as a priority, and we're able to move forward with that. And that is a success and a completion from a standpoint of your strategic plan. Continuing through, one of the things that we've done, council provided, is with policy direction to hire 12 additional FTE in public safety, that's six police and six firefighters. And these positions will ultimately strengthen our preparedness and further enhance public safety response capabilities citywide. We're looking forward to seeing the true effects of those 12 FTE when they all come online. Of course, we have had, been recruiting for all 12 of those positions and have had great success when it comes to both fire and police and moving those forward and getting them One of the things that we're really proud of also is we try to, in all different departments and divisions, follow some kind of industry standards. And one of the things we do in police is an accreditation process. And it's important to note that we did complete a rigorous three-year accreditation process with Northwest Accreditation Alliances. And this really provides an opportunity to make sure that our police and policies, our standard operating procedures, align with professional standards that have been identified that throughout the nation, people try to follow, and public safety departments and police departments throughout the, the nation try to follow. It helps provide us with efficient and effective services that are, to all residents. And also, one of the things that's great is we did have city-county insurance, you're very familiar with CIS. They did a best practices assessment, and we received a score of 97%, which is excellent. So that's another, just real positive. I think that goes to reflect on council and your importance that you've placed on public safety within our community. And then also the leadership of Chief Hensman and Chief Sanchez and others within our community, within our organization, that have focused on making sure that we deliver positive, effective, and efficient services to our community. Some of the things is, from a fire perspective, there's a number of things that we're trying to do to make sure that we're a high-performing organization. First, do asset tagging. We've implemented to help improve procurement controls, warranty management, and other things, making sure that we have everything identified and tracked to provide for safe and secure equipment for, for those that provide that service in the community. Along with an expansion of our swift water rescue, the, the chief has mentioned to you that we did increase that. We got a boat that was donated to us. It was over $40,000 that a community member in our community provided, so we do have a new swift water rescue program. And we've already utilized that multiple times to provide multiple rescues this summer with that new boat. We're always trying to make sure that we're providing recruitment opportunities and reflecting to the community and to the greater area what type, type of organization we have. And one of the ways we do this is through a recruitment video that the police department has done. I've seen the video, it's great. You can look at it online, and it helps promote our hiring efforts by showcasing what a great department that we have here, and what a great community we have, and what a great place it is to work. Want to really point out and give kudos to B.C. Marshall's leadership, which helped expand our child safety program. You know, the safety and welfare of our community is extremely important. We really do have a wonderful car seat check-in program, and I think it's important that we highlight that, because a lot of people do utilize that, and ultimately, it does save lives and helps keep people safe. And of course, who cannot highlight Smokey the Bear? This is something, again, it's a community relations perspective, and our firefighters are great in working with the school district and, and getting information out there to the youth in our elementary schools. And one of the important things about that is when you touch individuals and kids in elementary schools, it does trickle up to the parents, and they hear about it also. So although we're focusing on maybe grade school kids, it ultimately impacts the adults and the importance of fire safety within our region. So one of the things I wanted to highlight here, I'm going to take a step away from the slides here in just a second, but our police department has a, and we've implemented a, a crime trends tool that you can use, our community can use, if they'd like. And it's sort of slick. It's a link to what's called Citizen Connect. And this provides an opportunity for community And this provides an opportunity for community members to sort of see what type of activities are occurring in our community. So I'm going to pause here with this. I'm going to escape out of my presentation. I'm going to pull up our website so people will understand how to get there. So what I did is I just, you just search for Grants Pass website. You get on our website, you go to the police department, and from there you scroll down on the police department and you go to important links. Grants Pass, Police, Citizens Connect. What this does is it basically pulls up a GIS type of map. And from here, you take a look at, you can take a look at different responses and what type of activities are occurring. So if we go back to, say, got to pick a date range, 01, 01 to today's date. And then if we go to, we come down here to select incidents, Grants Pass. Let's take a look at, hmm, let's look at thefts in the community. From there, you could come in here and you zoom in on our community, and it shows you the numbers of in the area where reported thefts occurred. And it looks like if you're going around here, the largest is around 241. So where does that represent? 147. Well, our largest theft activity is occurring, it looks like that's probably Walmart. So it gives you an idea of where, you know, those type of thefts occur. And I'll just give you another example unless someone else wants to pick something also. Let's see, let's do, drugs is something that people are always interested in. Drug investigations, let's see drug investigations, where that is. So if we take a look at drug investigations and where the most have occurred within the city, it looks like there is a large number here, 395, looks like the largest. We'll zoom in on there where that is. 395, 118. So it looks like it's Sixth and A Street. Right across the street from us is our largest activity for drugs. So isn't that interesting? So anyway, you could go through and take your time, and it's just interesting information that we have that we've incorporated that people can utilize as a tool to help educate themselves. If you'd like, I could pick another issue if you're interested, just so you can sort of see what it looks like, or I can move on. But anyway, it's something to play with. If you have any questions, feel free to let me know, and we could try to get you hooked up to that. But again, just go to our website, police page, and you can check it out there. We continue, even though public safety is one of those important aspects, and boots on the ground is important, but one of the big things about public safety also is making sure that you have a connection with the community. So I know I've addressed a number of things that are connecting with the community. Those things are important because it adds value to the service that we provide. It's not about arrests, it's not about warnings, it's about your impact on the community. And here's another example of that, besides not only children's seats and Smokey the Bear and those kind of things, but we do have a great citizen police academy that has been extremely successful. It's a great opportunity for people to have a better understanding of what really occurs in the police department. And it's been highly successful, and we're, again, doing another great year for 2025. Yes, it happens this time of year. I'll let the chief talk a little bit about it, but it's usually in the fall, early fall.
Yeah, they actually graduate next Tuesday, so they had some stuff over the weekend like defensive tactics, they've done emergency vehicle operations, firearms, lots of different classes, myself, investigations, patrol. It's been a banner year, my understanding, it's been fantastic. Absolutely. It's, I think, a week from tomorrow at 6:00. You're more than welcome, counselor.
Right? Moving on, just as you are aware, we did hire 12 new full-time public safety positions, six in fire and six in police. One of the things that we're going to be looking at, as council agreed to, is in the future here, we will be looking at some financial policies somewhere around probably January and March, and what that ultimately will do to the budget and where we might go from that perspective. And it looks like I've got a question, council president.
Seth.
Is there an update on how many of those positions are filled? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I can speak a little bit. There's a lot of people in backgrounds where you have to do another round of testings. A lot of people have already failed backgrounds, so it's going to take a bit, but we're getting after it.
On the fireside, we're excited that we sent out conditional last week. We will have five, one has completed background, the other five are starting background currently, so that would fill our six positions, and then we'll go through the standardized process that we have for that.
Thanks for the question. So economic development is one of those items, if you look through your strategic plan, a very healthy goal. There are so many different initiatives in the strategic plan, and one of those I think is important to note, and through some of these things I wanted to highlight, but they're in their work plan itself, is through the city, we are very poised to establish a business-friendly culture, both from a standpoint of our city, my city colleagues, and you as a council, establishing policies that are sending a message that we are friendly to our entrepreneurs and to our business community. One such thing is your support of the Main Street program is an example of you saying, you know what, business is important to us, small business is important to us, and you've actually provided resources to make some of that happen. There are many other things that will be discussed. One of those is an incubator, where that's going to be a future discussion item. But all of those things, when you look at that and you make a determination on your policy, you are creating, you as a policy board are creating the culture that will help define Grants Pass and how we look at entrepreneurs in our community. Expanding and marketing and promotion initiatives focused on events, you know, one of the things that is, I just wanted to highlight is we are very much in partnership with the community. We have a number of different programs, but each one of the programs that we're associated with have been extremely successful, but we do support the tourism advisory committee, other programs. We had a great event this weekend that was just exciting. I know Council Riker and Council Benham were there for sure. Oh, Council King, I remember seeing him there also, to the Dollar Mountain ribbon cutting. That was, the energy that was there was just insane, and the amount of people, I don't know how many, it was way over 100 people. It was just packed. It was absolutely incredible. I hiked the trails after the ribbon cutting, and it is, if you, you definitely, all of you need to go out there and check that out. And Bradley and Josh and his team, and you as policy board, this has been something that's been going on for over 10 years probably, and we finally got it, and it's just so exciting. So I want to, I would really want to thank our dedicated staff and you as a council and a board, being able to take something that was a dream and make it into reality, and the energy and enthusiasm, it's just, those kind of things are really what define a great community, and we've got it. So I greatly appreciate that. I don't know if any of the council members want to mention anything about that event, but it was a great event.
Ditto.
Ditto, I heard ditto. Okay, you didn't turn your mic on, but I want that on record, ditto.
Ditto.
So one of the things we've been focusing on, and it's not, it's not all about just infrastructure, but we've been trying to work with the state and our local area to try to develop Spalding Industrial Park. We're looking at funding opportunities to help with the infrastructure challenges that they have, and also just trying to get an idea of what type of lands are available and working with a number of different people, including industrial lands group that have been meeting. They've been meeting here, they've had a few meetings, I've attended some of those. And it's great to actually have a group associated with the industrial lands that we have. It's just another step forward in us trying to market our employment land that we have. So mentioned briefly, the development of a culture that will help define how we deal with entrepreneurs and our economic development program itself. And we've got such a great groundswell of energy that's occurring through Main Street, through Million Cups, through Innovation Hub discussions, that it's neat to be a part of this, and I'm really pleased that Grants Pass from the city was a part of helping to develop Main Street program from way back when, and people like Council Benham, who's spent a lot of time, energy, and probably his own money in helping get Main Street off the ground, to counsel identifying important aspects of economic development and focusing on that. I've heard multiple times from you on the dais that you ran to be economic development-focused, and it's starting to happen. So it's really neat to see all of these pieces come together and where we might be a year from now. All part of quality of life is art also, and it's great that we've worked with COPA, we've developed different murals in Beaver Alley, and we're continuing to talk about different artwork, and it's wonderful that we continue to expand that, because people do like when they're in the downtown area to be able to walk around and look at those, that kind of artwork. So when it comes to implementing an economic opportunity attractive strategy, we've got an urban real agency. That's something that some communities don't have. Some communities have one urban real agency, some have multiple, but we do have one. And ours is poised to be extremely successful. We're at a point now in our urban real agency history that we can start thinking big and thinking catalyst projects, similar to the North Star project we're talking about up here, where we're going to be looking at an opportunities plan, and that's going to be exciting. We've also looking at grants that the urban real agency has provided, and that's a great tool that we're utilizing to help increase diversification of our economic activity. So reinforce a single point of contact at the city to better serve business community in the downtown area. One of the things we've done over the past year is we've hosted multiple downtown merchant meetings. That has really helped, just in us showing that we care, we want to hear about what's going on. And we've also partnered with Main Street on multiple meetings of theirs and tried to work together as a team, and that team approach, I think, is allowing us to go way further than we could all by ourselves. We've reviewed six urban real agency grant applications for building rehabilitation. The wonderful thing about the urban real agency grants is it takes a small amount of public dollars, and it incentivizes a large amount of private investment. So for a small amount of public dollars, you're incentivizing a large amount of private investment. That's what urban real agency is about, and we're doing it with our grant programs that we have. Providing opportunities for residents and visitors to experience exciting events and attractions. You know, ever since we've taken over those three events, meaning Fourth of July and Art along the Rogue and the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, they have been very successful. My colleagues, the community, council, identifying resources to make that happen, has shown that these are great community events that we're going to die if council didn't ultimately make a decision to say, we'll take them over for now. Is it the right thing for us to do forever? That's ultimately a policy decision. We're having discussions about maybe new groups coming forward like Main Street that may be interested in helping and assisting with us in some of the events that impact their areas. So I'm excited about where that might go and the future that that has. But, you know, Art along the Rogue, you've probably read some of the reports and seen what a success that was this year, and it just continues to be bigger and better each year. Another thing that builds community that was extremely successful is we did host movies in the park. They were in August. And we're also beginning to build little library kiosks for playground locations. And again, all these little details really help show what type of community we are and how we value life experience that your residents, your constituents have living in Grants Pass. So this is exciting when it comes to housing and homelessness. You know, so many times we hear about the need for housing. Well, it's exciting when you think about all the houses and the future houses we have on the books, but here are just a few that are happening in this year. We've got Crisman with a 51-unit Nebraska Trail apartment complex. That was formerly city-owned. That is something that the city incentivized over 50 homes to happen, and that was, that wouldn't have happened without the city's leadership. 36-unit Hillcrest Veterans Village, using approximately $800,000 of ARPA dollars granted by the city, broke ground. Another unit, 36 units, that wouldn't have happened without the city's contributions. 68-unit Allen Creek Crossing Project, using $3 million ARPA grant for four-acre parcel development in, that's again, something incentivized by the city. You are showing to be a real leader in trying to address some of the housing issues that we have within our community. We have a 20-unit Scoville Senior Cottage, using 749 urban real agency grants. 133-unit Allenwood Mixed Income Project that you're looking at. And then 21-unit Fruitdale Cottage Project, using $800,000 of ARPA grant dollars. These are all incentivized by you as a policy board, and this makes a real difference in addressing the housing needs of our community. Another thing is our block grant dollars. We have received 30 low-to-modern-income applicants to help with re-thrivation and housing rehabs. Those low-income houses that are in need of that to help reduce energy costs and keep the maintenance up are able to utilize this program, and it's been very successful. And so that's a great program that council has helped identify and that we've moved forward with. Again, adding value to the community, we were able to put in a new gazebo at Fruitdale Park. It's great. If you haven't gone out there and taken a look at it, it's just one additional activity, one additional piece of hardscape that the community could utilize. And with that, that concludes my report. There's so much more in that 36 pages in the work plan, but I just wanted to give you an upper-level, you know, report on all the things. And again, this is something that couldn't have happened without you as a policy board, dedicated leadership of our colleagues, and a number of community volunteers. Thank you.
Comments from council? Andrea.
Sorry. I just want to say it's, we've been mired in this homeless thing for so long. It's so very nice to hear about all the awesome things that are being done in our community. So thank you for highlighting that.
Thank you. Thank you, council.
Thank you. That's a really great report, and it's good to see all the wonderful things that staff is doing. You make the city a really great place. Thank you. And up next on our agenda, we have a presentation. It is, if I can grab it, Hillcrest Drive Beacon Hill Surplus Property Partition Update.
Thank you, council president, members of the council. So this is a property that we've talked about numerous times with this board. This is surplus, I'm sorry, not surplus property, but park reserve property that the city's had for many years. I think we acquired this property around 2001 from Calvary Baptist Church. So it's been, it's been in city ownership a long time. Our goal today is to give you a bit of an update on where we're at with the partition that the council directed that we proceed with a couple of years ago, and to let you know where we're at on the survey. And it relates to several of your council goals that are listed there. So this started in late '23. Council directed staff to subdivide two residential building lots off the city's 10-acre Hillcrest Drive parcel. Again, the proceeds that come out of sale of land like this, as it's currently designed, is they go into the Housing Opportunity Fund, and the county, and the city manager just addressed a couple of the projects that that opportunity fund has kind of helped to support. So we looked into that. We hired Peter Allen Lance surveying to prepare the plat. That went through in October. He came back and showed some... He came back and showed some drainage swales that were going to impact this, and so using this map here, I will just point out mostly what we're, the main area we're talking about. So here's I-5 that kind of runs along the western and southern portion of our property, and then Hillcrest Drive runs along the north boundary, and then Beacon along the east. So there's several houses existing, as you know, if you've been out to that area. The council back in '23 talked about these blue boxes. There's one, two that are on Hillcrest, and then there's another one here on Beacon, talked about potentially partitioning those three off for sale. When we started looking into this and we hired Peter Allen, the main one that came back, well, I should start down on the Beacon one. The Beacon one, the frontage is pretty limited, and it also would kind of prevent us from being able to provide a, you know, a good southerly access point to the park when it is developed. So that one kind of got taken out of the picture because, you know, most of the people that will visit this park in the future presumably are going to come from the south, and so eliminating the opportunity for the city to control that access point on the south, we thought would not really be in the best interest of getting people into the future park. So we kind of focused in on these two lots on the north. The one on the east, turns out that it collects, there's a culvert underneath Hillcrest here, and that culvert collects a lot of drainage that comes from the north side of Hillcrest. It's fairly deep right there, and it would take a pretty significant amount of fill to make that a buildable lot. So what we did then was we started to focus on the one remaining lot there to the west. This just shows the plat that Alan, Peter Allen did on the survey as a preliminary drawing, kind of showing, you know, the majority of parcel one, 9.4 acres, being the future park, and then showing the parcel one and parcel two. So as I just mentioned, that parcel three, we sent a council memo and kind of recommended that we not pursue that and that maybe the city consider kind of putting a hold on the project until we can do more outreach on the park. In June, you directed us to get an appraisal. There was still some interest from the council in looking at, okay, well, we still want to see what maybe that one lot, what will it gain, and maybe we should continue with the partition. So we did do that. The appraisal came back at about $100,000 for that .3-acre lot. I think this council has seen this maybe once or twice, but this is the concept plan for Beacon Hill Park that the Planning Commission approved several years ago. Shows a parking lot up here, I think about 35 lots, parking spaces up off of Hillcrest. There are a number of different amenities in here, a large walking trail system, and basketball, and shelters, and some other amenities. So in July, then, after the council gave us direction to continue, Peter Allen, he kind of picked up where he left off on his survey work, and then he did identify at that point a couple of new concerns related to drainage and wetlands on the eastern parcel, which again, we're calling parcel two. This is parcel two. It's about .37 acres is on his preliminary drawing. So that's the area that he kind of came back and talked with us about. It is encumbered with some other natural drainage, some easements, a couple of small wetlands. The Demeray Canal is the Grants Pass Irrigation District's main canal that runs through there. The estimate from the appraiser did not take that in, so our assumption is that that $100,000 that we could potentially get proceeds from may drop a little bit with some of these encumbrances. This is just a map kind of showing where those crisscross in there, these easements and some of the wetlands. And then this is a little bit more detailed drawing that Peter Allen did, kind of showing some of the natural features and drainages. So the question really that we're here to talk about today is, you know, what is the council's position on continuing forward with the plat and potentially breaking off a lot for the Housing Opportunity Fund? There may be an opportunity to still get a lot and still avoid the easements. The main opportunity for that would be closer to I-5, though, so there's probably a reduced value on a residential lot, you know, fronting on I-5, but it's certainly possible if you wanted to do that. It is, let me go back to our concept drawing on the park. So again, we're talking about kind of this upper-left corner of the drawing. This is where we preliminarily showed the future parking lot to be for the park. So that would need to be reexamined if you wanted to pursue that area. So after looking at those options, talking to Peter Allen, at this point, staff does recommend suspending the survey at this time. We'd like to kind of reengage the community since it's been over six years that we did our survey to ask, you know, them what kind of amenities they'd like to see in Beacon Hill Park, and, you know, get that input and then come back to you with what we learned from that. In terms of the cost implication, the survey, our contract with Peter Allen is $9,800. We've incurred about $3,000 to date, so if we stopped right now, there would be, you know, about $6,800 unspent on that. That amount doesn't include the full amount of money that would take to make the lot to the point where we could list it as just ready to go, so somebody could, you know, put it on the market and sell it. We would still need to go through the recording fees and deeds and probably a few other site improvements that would be needed in order to get that. So there's some other costs that would be included above and beyond the $9,800. The budget for this is our LB 6388. That's our surplus property sales, and as of today, we've got just a little over $340,000 in that account. So here's a few call-to-action items. You could direct us to continue with the partition survey and ready parcel two for listing, whether that's parcel two where it was shown or an alternate location. We could suspend the survey, proceed with that public engagement. We could suspend the survey with no action at this point in time. The Beacon Hill Park does have its own dedicated capital fund. I think there's about $550,000 in there. So, but, you know, so it's not enough to go and build the park by any means today. We're going to, we're still going to have to focus on some fundraising, some identifying some other resources for that. But it is enough to, you know, proceed with some public engagement, potentially put in some walking trails, and at least get some of the activity started on the park. And then we could put this on a future agenda if you want to talk more about it or take no action. So that's staff's report.
Rick, and then Joel.
Thank you, Brad. I'd be in favor of number two, suspend the survey and proceed with public engagement. And one thing I would be interesting to see is what would be some of the different ideas for those two parcels? For instance, if we would be looking at selling to an adjacent property owner, that would entail a property line adjustment rather than a partition, and we might be able to get the same value or even more by such an action. But the property line adjustment would be a totally different process, and so I think looking into this further would be my direction. Thank you.
Okay. You may have said it, and I may have missed it, Brad. You can ready parcel two for listing, and couldn't we also then, with that, also proceed with public engagement? Or does the parcel two listing forego opportunities so that it can't be a park?
No, council, I think you're right. We probably could.
And which one's parcel two? The one to the south or the north?
The parcel two is right here. So it's to the west side of the existing house that's up there on Hillcrest.
So that's a viable alternative also, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think we would need to know for certain before we go to the public.
Right.
You know, whether exactly what the boundaries of the future park are.
Right. Okay.
But, I mean, we could probably get the timing lined up, yeah.
Yeah, I was just looking at an option where we could maybe have some additional housing and also the park. Okay.
Kathleen?
In regards to what Rick said, is there any interest, or have the residents been asked if they'd like to accumulate property and do a different type of?
We have not approached the existing owner of this parcel here on Hillcrest Drive. We have not done that.
So it would just be that one that would be viable to sell to a property owner, existing property owner?
Yeah, I think so, because the other existing parcels, lots that front Beacon, you know, if you're going just to the west, you know, they wouldn't, there's no contiguity. So they wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be able to create, just sell them a piece. I mean, parcel three, I think it's, where we've landed is it's because of the significance of the drainage facility that goes through there and it collecting, and Josephine County actually has the easement and owns the culvert. And I think, I mean, maybe Jerry Spason has more to add on that, but I think we have kind of landed where it would be helpful for the city, for the future, to control that, for public infrastructure and stormwater management. So then you're really talking about this area here. Again, we do have frontage on Beacon down at the south end, but as I mentioned earlier, we think that that's not wise to proceed with that because it gives us access to the park from the south side.
Yeah, I'm kind of in favor of carrying on with the survey, number one, like Joel was kind of mentioning, and seeing what other things could be done for the park.
Rob?
Yeah, Brett, so you mentioned there's roughly $550,000 in the LB fund for that park?
Correct.
For the building, okay. So, and that fund has essentially stayed the same every year? I mean, we're not building on it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So when we're talking about off-street parking and walking and biking trails, restroom, you feel that all that could be accomplished for that, for that amount of money, within the funds that we have budgeted already, right?
No, we would not be able to construct all those amenities with the existing money.
So what kind of figure are we looking at just to have essentially these bare-bones amenities? Do we have any idea? How much more money do we need?
Well, we worked with ZCS to get us some numbers about six years ago. That was, you know, that was a couple of million, so it's going to be more than that today.
Okay. So we're probably 75% short minimum, and maybe a lot more than that. Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions? I believe we had one option. Joel, if you will, was it Joel? And will you repeat it, please?
Yeah, so I was just asking us to consider selling that one lot and then going out for public engagement. It would make the park area a little smaller. It would improve housing incrementally, not by a lot, but it would also then provide some additional resources, hopefully for park development. I'm not sure if those monies translocate, but hopefully they would.
And I apologize, I think I was incorrect. I think it was Rick who, did you have direction that you gave? Rick?
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, so could you, I was wrong. I said Joel, and it was Rick. So if you could repeat your direction?
I believe it was number two up there.
It was to survey the community for more input on future park potential?
Yes. Suspend the survey until we have that additional information.
Right.
And then also to include exploring the idea of adjacent property owners as well in that community outreach.
Any other comments or questions? So we are discussing suspending the survey and proceeding with public engagement on Beacon Hill Park amenities, and we'll start with the rural call. We'll start with Joel.
Yes.
No. Yes?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
And I will, I will vote, I will vote yes, and so I believe that that is, so, yeah, five-three, so the motion will pass. So does staff have direction?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
All right. And next up on our agenda, I keep burying my paper there. Next up on our agenda, we have a moderate income revolving loan program.
Thank you, Council President, members of the city council, and staff. Let me go ahead and start this. I think I need to look at my glasses again, I can't see. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to, as we segue from property to a possible funding source for new housing, we'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you, council, the Moderate Income Revolving Loan Fund. This fund's actually provided by the State Organ Housing and Community Services, OHCS, and we do, I will be sharing my presentation time with staff at OHCS who are driving the MREL, as it, or it's also affectionately known as. So it's the Moderate Income Revolving Loan Fund, but we refer to it as the MREL. In terms of summary and subject, this is an overview of the new funding from the state. This is a council discussion and possible motion to implement this new funding and the relationship to county, to this council goals, economic growth, housing, and fiscal stability by providing a local access for a new funding program to develop new housing. So with that, I do have Representative Lindy from OHCS. I believe she's online, and Lindy will attempt to log you in. Should I go off my presentation and?
Down.
Okay. Lindy, do you, or can you pull up your presentation, or do you want me to?
Absolutely. More than happy to share my screen and navigate through the PowerPoint.
Okay. Can she do that?
Awesome.
Oh. Excuse us.
No worries. I can definitely start sharing, and my apologies for not being on camera today. My Wi-Fi has been awful today, so don't want to have anything cut out. Thanks so much for having us here today. I also have Megan Ellerton, our rural program manager, here as well, just to help answer any questions, comments, concerns that folks have post-presentation. I know that we are limited on time, so I am going to try to talk through the overview as quick as possible without overwhelming folks at the same time.
Lindy, do you want to go ahead and share your screen? I believe we are showing it behind, okay.
Sorry, I was just giving that initial spiel first. Can everyone see that PowerPoint?
Yep, we can see it now. Thank you.
Perfect. And I'll try to make sure to reserve enough time for you, Mark, to go through your portion, just giving that high-level overview. So getting into what MREL is, the Moderate Income Revolving Loan Program that was established by Senate Bill 1537 in the 2024 legislative session, and it's a revolving loan program to boost funding, or for cities and counties to boost housing production for moderate-income Oregonians or below 120% AMI. to boost housing production for moderate-income Oregonians at or below 120% AMI. And there's two key components of this slide, the first being that it's for cities and counties to boost housing. So with this program, cities and counties are also called sponsoring jurisdictions once the program is live locally. And it really is for sponsoring jurisdictions to be in the driver's seat as it relates to this program. So there's a lot of flexibility within Merle and how sponsoring jurisdictions will be able to set it up as it relates to meeting the needs of your community. And that's kind of the second portion of this slide, is the Oregonians at or below 120% AMI. It's really geared to, uh, help folks at that middle-income population. And so with this program, again, there's a ton of flexibility, so you can implement the program at 120% AMI, or if it's, uh, if it best meets your community needs to set the program and the housing production at 80 or 100% AMI, absolutely workable under Merle. So a little bit more about what Merle is, it established no-interest revolving loan fund, again, for cities and counties or interchangeably spoken about as sponsoring jurisdictions, um, to boost that housing. And we were allocated $75 million under Senate Bill 1537, and 50 million of that is allocated in our first biennium. 20% of that initial 50 million is a rule set aside for projects, so that, that amounts to $10 million. Out of that 50 million, and then we'll get our second, or our remaining 25 million in the following biennium. We have not spent any dollars yet, we do have two folks that are set to be sponsoring jurisdictions, who are currently working through the master agreement process with us, so that's Kusby and Tillamook County. Kusby's standing this up as a city and is working with, uh, Economic Development District, I believe, um, in order to stand up some program elements, whereas Tillamook County is going to be the sponsoring jurisdiction for, um, that area and is working with surrounding cities as well, to potentially stand up the program with their buy-in as well. Perfect, key stakeholders in a Merle program, uh, OHCS in this program really acts as the loan issuer. Again, I can't emphasize this enough, that the sponsoring jurisdiction, which is that second arrow, or sorry, the third arrow down there, which is the city or county that really stands up and establishes a local Merle program. The county tax assessor is also going to play a vital role in this program as it is a TIF model or a tax increment financing model, so they are going to be really vital to calculating the program fee, which we'll be able to chat about, um, a little bit, and, um, the project funding for how much folks would be eligible for. Then we have our project applicant as well, which is the housing developer that applies to the sponsoring jurisdiction based on the project application process that they establish. And that's going to be a developer with an eligible housing project that's applying for a project grant from that sponsoring jurisdiction. And we do have the fee payer as well, um, which I know is a little bit odd as you're thinking about repayment, but, and why a project applicant would be granted dollars, but then potentially have someone else be a fee payer. Uh, under Merle, both rental and homeownership projects are potentially eligible, so under homeownership projects, um, you might have the fee payer, um, be different than the project applicant. Again, I don't want to take up too much time, I know we've only got about 15 minutes left, but for a very simple overview of how this program works is that, um, kind of even getting to before step one, how sponsoring jurisdictions stand up this program is they pass an originating ordinance or resolution with three critical components, so that's going to be a definition of local site control, the compliance plan, and a definition of utility allowance, um, or utility calculation, and how that's going to be used within the program. Once that originating ordinance or resolution is passed, then the sponsoring jurisdiction will be able to enter into a master agreement with OHCS. And if the sponsoring jurisdiction is a city, then we'll also have to enter into an IGA or intergovernmental agreement with the county as well to really make sure that we've encompassed that county tax assessor role as well. So once the IGA or master agreement is executed, that's when OHCS would deem that program as stood up. So then we're getting into the, uh, actual program and how it flows through. So OHCS issues no-interest loans to a sponsoring jurisdiction based on the provisionally-approved application that the sponsoring jurisdiction submits to OHCS. And upon the completion review, uh, OHCS is able to give that loan to the sponsoring jurisdiction, which the sponsoring jurisdiction then, um, issues a grant to the developer. And I know I just said loan and grant within the same sentence, so what's the difference? Oh, HCS issues a loan to the sponsoring jurisdiction because that also encompasses a 6% admin fee for the ongoing monitoring and compliance and management of the Merle program. So the admin fee is 6% of five, 6% of the, on top of the grant amount, and 5% of that goes to the sponsoring jurisdiction, and 1% of that goes to the county tax assessors specifically for their role. So once the sponsoring jurisdiction then issue the grant to the developer, the developer will be able to build or improve on the housing property since this grant is, oh, loan slash grant is also eligible for, um, new construction or conversion. And then the county tax assessor from there is going to collect the program fee and remit the payment back to OHCS, and that's how we're going to be able to cycle these funds to allow and establish more housing projects. Some resources, just really quickly, we have one-on-one technical assistance that's available for sponsoring jurisdictions to chat with us one-on-one, to get really into the nitty-gritty details of what Merle is, how it works. And definitely want to make sure that folks are, um, know that that's readily available and we're really eager to have these conversations with folks and be a, a robust support as well. We do have our Merle toolkit that is on our Merle webpage, so that's forms and different templates that we've provided, including but not limited to, uh, an originating ordinance template, a list of all of the documents that we would need to deem a complete application, in addition to the annual report template that would be required to be submitted by all sponsoring jurisdictions annually. We've also got some FAQs, affordability tools as, um, eligible projects are required to have an affordability period of 10 years or the life of the loan, whichever one is longer. So definitely have those tools online and happy to chat through what those look like as well, in addition to some other program resources. And it, and finally, our Initiate Master Agreement Smart Sheet and our Intent to Apply, which triggers the review process on OHCS's side. We also have a Merle Questions and Comments portal that is, that can be used for folks to submit any kind of questions, comments, or concerns that they have as they're navigating, uh, the Merle process. But again, I can't emphasize enough that we really are here to be thought partners and would love to meet with folks one-on-one, to chat through any questions, comments, or concerns. One thing that I do just want to call out in this most recent legislative session in 2025, Senate Bill 48 was passed, and it does make technical fixes to the Merle program that was originally passed as Senate Bill 1537. And under Senate Bill 48, sponsoring jurisdictions will be able to issue loans to developers or project applicants in addition to repaying an alternative, um, the alternative sources. We're still working out what that looks like on the OHCS side, but do anticipate having information out early 2026 for folks be able, for folks to be able to use and implement their Merle programs under Senate Bill 48. So I know I spoke really fast, but again, want to make sure that Mark's got time. But any questions, comments, or concerns, please don't hesitate to reach out with us. Again, more than happy to meet with folks to chat through everything.
Thank you, Lindy, I know it's a lot for this afternoon, given the council agenda, but I'll, there are five takeaways. I'll kind of wrap this present, presentation up to the council. Let me get this back on right again. The five takeaways are five key components to understand about the Merle. I mean, this is brand-new, I've been at the financing and real estate, particularly affordable housing development, funding sources, light tech, all kinds of deals. This is way out of the box thinking in terms of what the state is providing. So if you don't understand, I'm with you on that, but I think the key points of what I have studied and what staff has been tracking it, this is a source of gap fund, funding. So a developer comes in, they have their source of equity, they have construction financing lined up, but they need just a little bit source to get them over to build a project, and that's critical these days, given our interest rate environment and just lack of capital going into real estate development. This funding gap could be the difference between making a project go or not. So this is a source from the state that the city isn't providing in terms of, uh, capital or URA or anything. It's really coming from the state and facilitated by the state and supported by the state, so that's, that's a good thing. The second key thing, and this is, this is the tax increment financing part, and this is the more complex part of it, is that once a project is established and built, there is a taxable improvement value. So for example, today you have vacant land, and then tomorrow, if you build on it, the, the value of the land will increase by this much, this amount of money. The idea of the Merle is that you would take that increment amount, and instead of the developer paying that back to the county and the city, is that it's packaged up, uh, 10 times, and so that value is then provided to, or excuse me, that amount is provided to the developer, the developer can use that right away, they don't have to engage construction financing, they can use it and go off the, and start their project and then move off to other sources of funds, which then they engage to build the project. So that's a good thing, the, the other good thing is that they can use these funds, uh, or they don't have to pay back to the city these funds until they get CFO, until they complete it. So that delay is important because they're not paying interest or carrying costs, but rather they have a lump source of funds upfront that they can use right away. So that taxable improvement part is the kind of the heart and soul of the Merle, and that's what's different in terms of any other source of funding out there. And the fact that eventually over time, these revolving loans will be paid back to the city, city pays the, the county and the state, other loan, Merle funds will then be trickled or be available in the future, so after 10 years likely. So the idea is hopefully this is revolving and supporting itself over time. Eligible uses for this, for this funds, it seems like OHCS has kind of cleared the table, infrastructure, construction, acquisition. So there's real value in terms of, um, kind of the latitude of which developers can use those funds. But there is strings attached, and then there is a string in terms of affordability. There is an affordability aspect that will carry throughout that period, that, that, that payment period, and that's at least 10 years. But this is targeting 120% AMI, and so what that looks like in, in our neck of the woods, in terms of grants passed in Josephine County, is that these are the incomes for 120% up to, so a single person, uh, that is making 67,000 to a family of six, combined income, gross income of 112,000 is, is kind of the playing field, is the target audience. And so we, we look at what that translates into sales price, that could be a sales price between 300, 3,000 and 335. Or a rental value for a three-bedroom, up to 2,500, up to 3,000. What's interesting is that the rental value at 120% II is pretty darn close to market, if not a little bit better. And so this potentially could be of interest of a market-rate developer. The sales price is a little bit more, there's more of a backstop on that because the sales price is 120% AMI, and the sales prices behind me is not necessarily kind of the end-all, be-all, but it's going to be, um, it's going to be customized to whatever that, that family is bringing in. So whatever they can pay up to an amount of their 120% II, it's really one of those Zillow calculators when you type in, hey, how much can I afford? This is the price I'm looking at, this is the amount of money that I'm putting down. The calculation will calculate that in terms of a sales price, and so working with developers and understanding that sales price model under the homeownership will be critical in, uh, towards when we have interested applicants. So again, two components, keep in mind, this is really targeted to 120 AMI workforce housing. Pros and cons, again, I spoke to the pros, this is, could be initial capital for that gap. It's likely not going to be tremendous in terms of funding everything, but it could be, it could make a difference. Another pro is there's no interest payments given from the, the developer. Again, the fee payments can begin after construction is completed or CFO, and they can utilize this before construction. The key, key critical point that the state is offering here is that they're offering not only support to staff, but they're also offering technical advisory to the developer themselves. So as much I, I can call Lindy, the property owner, the developer, the architect, the engineer can also use, utilize the technical advisory support staff from OHCS. The cons, I, I'll go to it right away, that deferred tax period payments, we're not seeing that for 10 years. We're, instead of providing that, that loan, that grant to the developer, but after year 10, then we realize an improved product, improved homes, we have families in, investing and participating in the community. So it offsets, so there's that period of time where we're not receiving those taxes. The other cons is, is staff time, certainly at the origination portion, when, if we do have an applicant or developer interested in applying, there's a little heavy lift, there are documents to support from, from the Merle in terms of getting this off, off the bat, but we do have to define certain things about our Merle program in terms of compliance, in terms of tracking payments and the annual reporting that will take some staff time, but to OHCS's, um, credit, they have provided both support, documents, and continued support in terms of technical advice. So we'll take full advantage of that if we have a applicant wanting to apply for the Merle. I think that's it for my presentation, they're all, really the alternative is to adopt the local resolution now, it's, it's staff's recommendation to do that. What that does is, is, it doesn't promise anything, but it puts us a step, one step further in terms of when a person wants to apply for the Merle. We understand it's, although there's about 50 million available today, it will likely be first come, first served. So if we're able to have that adopting origination resolution in front today, then if and when an applicant comes forward, we're just one step ahead. We can, the other two alternatives are right behind me, and I see some hands up for questions. Myself and Lindy are available, and I know it's a lot for an afternoon, but we'll do our best to answer your questions.
I saw Rob, then Rick.
Yeah, thanks, I have a few questions. So first, uh, one of the cons that you had on, um, on the board was staff time, and if I heard correctly earlier, there'd be a 6% admin fee on this, and 5% of that would come back to our city, right? So you would think that, I would think that that would, that would, uh, pay for the staff time, and is 5% comes back to us in admin?
Right, per, that'd be, Lindy, correct me if I'm wrong, that'd be size according to the size of the grant, the loan, but right, there would be a fee that we, we can use for.
So we're being compensated for additional staff time?
Correct, right.
So to me, that's not much of a negative for, if we're being compensated for it, but that's just my observation so far. Is the, do the developers, uh, have to record deed restrictions like we do with low-income housing?
That's correct, Council, that's a good question, they do, they would have to do so in terms of a rental project, a deed restriction at least 10 years. And in terms of an ownership project, there'll be a resale restriction recorded on each of those loans. And what that basically means is that if the, and Lindy, correct me if I'm wrong, if the owner of the home wishes to sell within that 10-year period, then they would have to sell it to another qualified buyer, but, correct, Council, there, there would be deed restrictions needed and recorded on both types of projects.
But only then 10 years, because like typically low income is like 30-year deed restriction, right?
Correct, that's right.
So basically, in 10 years, somebody's free and clear to sell it for whatever they want, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not sure how I feel about that. The other thing is, and I don't know, um, if all the councils really understand tax increment financing, but, um, with our URA, which is of course our tax increment financing, uh, gem, so to speak, right now, that's costing us about a million dollars a year in our general fund that we could be using for public safety, if ballpark figures. And I'm just wondering how much will, are we, are we, um, are we projecting that using a tax increment financing, finance method for this is going to essentially deplete our, or diminish our tax base for those 10 years? Like what kind of dollar figures are we talking about?
And I also believe the presenter online, so after, after you answer, then I think she had something to add as well, I just wanted to say that.
That's a good question, Council, I, I, we, to be honest, we haven't, we would, we don't know in terms of that impact. We, we, our initial, uh, understanding is that, um, properties that are developments that might, might be suitable are smaller projects. So hence the loans or the grants based off that tax increment financing would be fairly, um, normal, but we, we don't know. But that's a good, good point in terms of impacting, if we adopt this program, what would impact, how would that impact our URA?
So when you say, uh, projects would be, you look, you, uh, you foresee them being, we'll say, smaller. So what kind of dollar figure per project is kind of in the, the target range of this?
Yeah, that's, that's been the kind of the million-dollar question that we've been asking OHS and various stakeholders in this. We've heard estimates looking at 20,000 to 25,000 per unit. So I don't, there's no basis for that right now. This is a brand-new program that hasn't got off the shelf in terms of, so it's hard to gauge, but our, obviously our county taxes are lower amongst other counties, so likely that 20, $20,000 to $25,000 per unit would maybe even lower when we apply it here in this county.
Okay, so we've got a lot of upsides here. We're not sure how much it's going to cost us. It doesn't sound like it's going to cost us a lot, but we don't know how much it's going to cost us. So we've got, do we want to buy gold today, but we can't tell you what the price is? So that, that would, we kind of need to, I would need to pin that down a little bit. Also, do we, is other than the reimbursing, the assessor, is there any other collaboration needed with the county for this?
None, no. We initially met with Chris Pratt, the county assessor, and he's fully aware of, of this program and supportive. I imagine the tax collector themselves as well and their staff, but in terms of other county or city agencies, it'd be between the city as a sponsoring jurisdiction and the county as the assessor.
So I think, I'm sorry, I forgot her name, the woman on, online.
Oh, Lindy.
Yeah, Lindy. She said that there was so far two other jurisdictions, just because it's brand-new. There's been two, Cus Bay and the other one, I can't remember. So what kind of projects, do they even, okay, they, so they've just signed onto the program, but they probably don't have any projects yet specifically. So we don't have any examples of projects or project size, it's just they've signed on. Is that right?
Lindy, could, could you answer that in terms of Cus Bay or Tillamook?
Yeah, I'm going to answer that real quick, and then I'm going to toss it to Megan, because she's got a couple of points that she wants to add to that. Tillamook has three projects that they'd like to get down the pipeline. One is to our homeownership, and one is rental. I can't remember the size off the top of my head, but let me check through the details real quick. And then Cus Bay has a very large project of potentially 400 homes that they would be submitting for. So we've got a pretty good range that we're looking at right now. We're still looking at initial numbers for what, what Mural's going to come in to cover under the gap model, but I'm going to throw it to Megan for the couple of points that she had.
Yeah, it's okay that I jump in. Hi, everyone. My name's Megan Ellards. I'm the program manager for Mural with OHS. But just hearing y'all chat through some things, I did want to flag in terms of like admin support pieces, I know as mentioned, there is the 5% that goes to, to the city or county to, to do the administration of this program, but we also were just approved for cities and counties to use our ORCA's capacity building grant for Mural. That's another option, because we understand there might be some more upfront costs that need to be addressed with just some additional funding. So that, that is available as well in terms of kind of supporting admin, admin pieces of this. I, I also kind of heard, I was just kind of taking notes as you're talking, the mention of kind of the forgone tax piece in terms of the exemption. We do want to highlight fire district fees are, will remain whole, and it, it is kind of dependent on the size of those projects. I think, you know, we have heard other folks mention in other locations of like, hey, we kind of want to see what an example project looks like, and I think that's somewhat of a positive piece of Mural, is that it, there is such a range. We're seeing a lot of range of different types of interest in terms of project size, project type. Like Lindy mentioned, right now, we're seeing kind of a focus on homeownership from other interested areas, but like we mentioned, rental, homeownership, new construction conversion, all of that is, is allowable in any size. But a lot of that has to do with kind of your, your, your gap and how big that is in terms of project funding, what you might see on, in terms of the tax, the forgone tax piece. But again, yeah, we'd love to give some example numbers. We are going to put some project examples here, available pretty soon, and then also seeing some of these other folks come online here pretty quickly will give a good example of, of kind of the range of the project funding amount that's available.
Sure.
Sorry, that was a lot to jump in.
Yeah, the examples are exactly what I was, I was trying to ask or trying to picture in my mind. So examples would be great, but you just said something that I didn't follow. When you said that fire district fees or funding would remain the same, I have no idea how that's possible with tax increment financing. Can you explain what you meant by that?
Yeah, so, you know, and I think too, I know that folks have been working with the county tax assessor piece, but how, you know, the, the, the grant gets paid back, the loan gets paid back is like in lieu of property tax improvements. And so those exemptions, there was specific parts of our legislation that wanted to ensure that the fire district fees remain whole, and they don't get pulled into that exemption or those forgone taxes. Some, so those ones specifically get pulled out to remain whole and not get pulled into the exemption piece. So I think there would take coordination, there is coordination, and I know we've worked with the Department of Revenue to kind of work with tax assessors and understanding how to pull that out specifically from the property taxes, if they choose to go down kind of the Mural and what that would look like for their tax rolls.
So when you say fire district fee, we don't have a fire district specifically, but would that also include our public safety levy?
I don't think so. So if you don't have a fire district fee, it may not be applicable to you, but I, I'm not 100% sure if that would fall under that, if public safety would fall under fire district for your, for your area, but if not, then it would technically not be.
I guess then the examples would be really helpful, because otherwise, we have no idea what the cost is going to be to us. And the cost may be minimal, but without examples, we don't have anywhere to know. So, but thank you.
Yeah. Rick?
Thank you, Matt. Could you go back to the slide that concerns the finances? Okay, so on there, no, that one, the one with the chart. So I understand this better. When you go up in that upper left-hand corner, it says first four-person household, that would, the 97,000 would be the income for that family?
Correct. That'd be the gross income, combined income.
Okay. Do we have any calculations, because Josephine County is a depressed county, how many people could be, would fit in that category? In other words, if we have nobody's in that category, then the program doesn't really have an opportunity. Do we have any input from the state or locally that, who could be eligible?
We don't have that data today. We couldn't, we could take a look in terms of those projections from the state and Portland State, as far as what would, yeah, kind of household breakdown in relation to our population. We would have to take a closer look and, and see what those numbers are.
Because I see if we're looking at a program with people pulling those kind of salaries, I think it's going to be very few and far between, but it'd be helpful to have that information. Thank you.
Oh, and, oh, I'm sorry, it's the maximum income. I'm sorry. Yeah, you can be, right. I'm, thank you, JC. Our finance director corrected me. Yeah, I'm, yeah, this is the maximum income, so it's up to 97,000.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That helps me a lot. Thank you.
Indra?
Yes, Wendy, I heard you say, and I quote, "force cities and counties to boost housing." What do you mean by force cities?
So, sorry, that should be to help cities and counties boost local housing. And that is really just for us to come in and support as the loan issuer and with the technical assistance to help sponsoring jurisdictions set up this program and really stand up the housing that's best going to fit the population that is up to 120% AMI.
So there's nothing in there that makes or forces cities to do anything with this?
This is entirely optional for folks to stand up. There's no requirement that this program is stood up.
Kathleen?
So it just sounds like there's a lot of tiers here of how money is moved around and given and taken, and I'm like, Rob, I'd need more solid numbers, I guess, on that, and I might want to run it by a couple of builders to see what they think about it. So I'd probably not be voting for this today.
Other comments, questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And looking for direction from the dice?
Clint has something to say.
Oh, and Clint, Mayor Sherf?
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't raise my hand in time, because I wanted to make a question and comment. So I actually learned about this program during our last League of Oregon Cities conference, and the way I understand it is this is opening up a new avenue for funding streaming, so participants can utilize more of workforce housing developments rather than lower income or HUD housing-style developments. And so can, can you clarify that statement? Is this more towards workforce housing, kind of as, as it's called, moderate income?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Mark here.
Yep.
I can certainly attempt, or at least take a stab at that answer. Yes, I mean, this, this is a source available, would be available from the state, OHS. Traditionally, OHS has funding sources for correct AMI levels, anywhere from 80, 80 and below. Very few opportunities to target higher AMI levels, namely up to 120%, which is considered moderate or workforce. So this would be an available source specifically for targeting those type of developments.
All right, thank you for the clarification. That's all for me. Thanks.
Rick?
Further elaboration on that, again, I was at LOC, and they presented it, it sounded like a really neat program. But Clint, as you say, if we have more workforce housing, then we have the ability to bring people in to work here and earn income, so it actually makes a better, healthy economic climate if, if there is that opportunity for not only to be employed here, but to have the opportunity to find housing while they're employed. Thank you.
Yes, this is Mayor Sherf again. I'm sorry to interrupt, but yes, Rick, you are correct. That's, I, I believe why I would be an advocate for this funding source is it kind of meets our strategic planning and on, on pushing economic growth in our neighborhoods too, because like, like you stated, Rick, if we have the workforce housing available, then we can, we can attract more businesses to come and establish within our community. Thank you.
Comments or other questions? Rob?
Comment. Yeah, I mean, the, the upside of this is, is pretty, pretty obvious. Workforce housing is a good thing, it's needed. There's, there's no debate there, I don't think. It's nothing but positive, the upside. The question is, how much is it going to cost? And, and to, for me, even if we, due to the fact that there's a time lag between the time a project is, is planned and it gets, and all the details are done, we may not have really good examples from other jurisdictions for a while, but I would just need some, some relatively good-faith estimate as to what this is likely to cost us as far as our, reducing our tax base initially, because that's what it does. It will reduce over the first 10 years. We keep, we, we will pay for this. Our, essentially, the, the funds that our general fund will not get, will pay for this. So the question is, what's the cost? A good-faith estimate, which we haven't heard today, is, would be enough for me, because the upside is really good. But without, without having any idea what that is, and it may not be a big figure, but without having any idea what it is, I think it'd be irresponsible for, for, to move forward with it. It may not be hard to get a good-faith estimate, and the upside is intriguing, for sure.
Well, I had a, kind of a comment. I don't know if it would, and maybe either the mayor or Mark can help me with this, but it seemed like it, it wouldn't be costing us necessarily, because this is new development. So it's, is it, is it for new projects or existing projects? So if a project isn't going to be developed, I mean, we're even, we're not going to see the taxes ever, rather than just deferred for 10 years. Is that a little bit accurate? Or this is going to spur on new development that has a deferred tax income for the city, correct? I mean, that's very simplified.
Yeah, Council President, yeah, I, I'm tracking with you, right. I mean, ideally, the source has, as I mentioned, the two bullet points, the key point was the gap financing and tax increment or tax exemption. Yeah, it's meant to serve that gap, to push a project for, for new housing.
Thank you.
And I do, so sorry, I do want to mention that the, the program is eligible for new or conversion, and it is just the exemption on the taxes for improvements that are forgone.
So not just for new development, but for improvements?
It would have to.
It can be.
Yeah, I think, Lindy, correct me if I'm, looking, a conversion from when you, or a conversion of an existing building into additional units would be eligible.
Yes.
Rob, and then I think I saw Rick's hand earlier, but maybe you, it's not up anymore.
So I, I'm, I'm going to ask whoever, whoever feels qualified to answer. Regarding Victoria's question, I mean, it makes no difference whether it's new, whether it's existing, whatever, it costs us 3% a year. Once the tax basis, once, once, once it's frozen in a tax increment situation, then every year that, you know, the income from that, the, the revenue from that property will not go up. It's going to be frozen. So every, as, as all of our expenses go up, whether it's public safety at 5% to 7% a year, or our cost of living raises for our employees at roughly 3% a year, those projects or those properties will cost us 3% a year. We won't be getting any increased income. Is that, is that, is that not accurate? Anyone? It's pretty, it's pretty simple, right? I mean, JC can probably answer it, I would think.
I mean, that's correct. I mean, there's right, that increment is captured for that one period.
So regardless of what it is, it's, it's costing us 3% a year for the, probably the 10 years. Right? Thank you.
If, if I may, just kind of interject. So I read the same thing. I think the project, though, hopefully gains that 3% back at the end of the 10.
The upside is, yeah, we understand the upside of tax increment financing, but it's going to cost us, yeah.
Rick?
So I'd like to amplify a little bit where Rob is going. Well, 3% may be a factor in looking at the whole picture. Again, that's just one aspect. I think if you look at the whole, whole picture, the whole picture being the economy of the city, when you have additional people employed, when you have additional people, because of their employment, spending money, keeping the businesses alive, keeping the activity healthy within the community, that 3%, I think, could be a trade-off for a healthy community, and it will, the return on that 3%, I think, will exceed the 3% it's costing us. So I see through just the health and the community would be a real advantage. Thank you.
All right, other comments or questions from the dice, or from Mayor?
Yeah, can I weigh in, Victoria?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I just want to reiterate what Rick just stated. I firmly believe that the overall ROI on this loan program would exceed the actual loss in, or the freezing of the increased property tax on those specific properties. And, and we're, the way this program is set up, it is for a specific niche of properties and a specific niche of development, so it's not talking about freezing property tax on carte blanche across the whole development for that time period. I truly believe, as, as Rick said, is the overall community ROI outweighs that, that small cap on, or small freeze on property taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Indra?
Sorry, this is a question that just came to my mind. So it, it's up to 120%. So, and then you said it's a first come, first served, so it could be less, so it could be much lower income, they come first, they build the lower income. lower income. They come first. They build the lower income housing and then there's nothing left for the, the upper. Could that happen?
Yeah, let me clarify that. I think what, what the first part of it, the first come, first served is the 50 million available today from the state that is across, across the state allowed or eligible. And so we assume over time, it sounds like Coos Bay and Tillamook will be applying shortly as part of that 50 million bucket. That, that's what I meant in terms of queuing up a project that's wanting to submit for a request now will likely have a chance at that 50 million now versus later. And then the qualifying income for either homeownership or rental, right, is the gamut, anywhere from up to 120% AMI. So a project could request a Merle request for a project targeting something less, absolutely. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and then we don't know how much we might get, correct? Like.
Right. Until a project actually comes forth in terms of a property, a development, units, improvements, costs, then we can start to calculate and work with the county on that improvement value.
And we would, we would do it on a first come, first served?
Correct.
As people came.
Yeah, because it's, timing is of essence that since it's available now, we will work with an applicant wanting to, and walk with them along with the technical advisor to get them to the stage of being able to apply and secure a grant.
Rick?
So Matt, how does our timing today affect going forward if it's two weeks or four weeks in solidifying a position, for instance, if we want to be a candidate in that program? Or if we just need more information, is another two or three, four weeks going to really change that opportunity?
We don't have, well, I mean, the short answer is no. There's no one, there's people who are knocking at the door wanting to apply for these funds. We have on kind of a, we have let this fund, our folks know, local developers know about this through emails and, and the introduction with technical, particularly on the technical advisory port, portion of it. And we, no one's kind of stepped up in terms of wanting to apply. So, but I'd say we, but a dozen folks, we've let this known locally that this is available to folks. And we just haven't had anyone step up and requesting it now. So the short answer is there's no impending applicant wanting to apply for these funds. But that could change next week and that would kind of move us forward with requesting this or tracking this a little bit quicker. And to the council's point, you know, we could certainly work between now and then on providing examples so you can see kind of what's the, what's this project would look like and what would pencil out to be and the costs to the, the taxes that would be deferred for those 10 years. I think that's fair to understand both at a, ideally at a small and large kind of projects. But we'll work our, we'll work with OHCS and others to come up with that.
Thank you.
Could you tell me again if you have had developers who are interested, who have inquired about this?
They have.
Okay.
And they go through all the details and they don't talk to me anymore. So I'm not sure if that's, I think that's a couple, a couple of things. One, it's, it's hard to explain, and I don't blame them. But I do encourage them, there's technical advisors available at the state level. If there's a knowledge base of how the engaged tax increment financing, I imagine they'd probably be more inclined. But it's really, it's a little scary. I get it.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Is there any mandatory, like who gets these kind of projects, like labor workers only, or is it across the board, anybody can apply for this?
My understanding is we can customize it, but at this point, there's no mandate or criteria for that.
Indra?
Do you know in the two examples you have that are in applying or have, do they have builders already that have applied and they're ready to go? Is that what you said?
Megan, I see you nodding your head. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So Coos Bay, so that is an interesting piece of this, is Coos Bay and Tillamook kind of both came with some projects in mind. So they do have those projects set up. We do have other folks though that are thinking about getting this program stood up and are still kind of looking to match with, with projects. So kind of a whole range of things, but yes.
Okay, and the two that are going, are they, are they local builders to those communities or do they come from elsewhere?
I believe so, yes. I'm not 100% sure, but I, I believe they are. Lindy, you can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong.
I, I believe for the most part, I think that there are some other developers with other potential sponsoring jurisdictions, so not with the first two, that develop all around Oregon. So some folks, some developers aren't necessarily living in the community.
So it's possible that there could be builders specialized in this loan that go around the state to different communities and apply for it and build that aren't from the community, is what I'm hearing, right?
Yeah, that'd be, I mean, that's correct.
Other comments?
But the sponsoring jurisdiction does have to provisionally approve any project application first. Again, since the sponsoring jurisdictions are so, so, so very in the driver's seat for this, it doesn't come to OHCS without sponsoring jurisdiction approval first.
But you. I would say we're not necessarily seeing that yet in, in what we're, what we're experiencing the conversations we're having, so.
But we have had local developers who have inquired. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just remind counsel, similar to other RFPs, we can certainly structure them where they score higher for the local developers or folks. So that could be done. And it sounds like we have that latitude within our program.
Rick?
I think today there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I could see either answering those questions through a memo or else another workshop. Thank you.
Either way, we're happy to.
So did you, are you putting forth a memo? No?
I think a memo would be appropriate at this time.
Oh, okay. So I have a motion for a memo. I have a second. And, oh, all in favor, I see thumbs up on this as is kind of the tradition at the end of workshops. So do you have direction?
Yes, great, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan and Lindy.
Yes, thank you.
So next up, we have agenda review. Do we have any agenda review items? Yes, Rick?
On the non-bargaining, I know we made direction, but I feel there's some loose ends still out there. And I guess I would like to see if the council would like to tie it all up and finish some of the undone on the non-bargaining and bring back some of the recommendations that was made by the task force and review those and see what direction the council would like to take on each individual item.
Okay, so more information coming or on, put it on a future workshop or?
I think Erin would have a better.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think at this point, you've got a council member suggesting maybe council looking at further discussion. So I'd say that probably should be moved forward to a workshop to get different, additional direction. So if there's at least three council members that would like to have that, then we could put that on the calendar to be scheduled. But we need to have those three council members that would be interested.
I believe you have them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other agenda items? All right, I am looking possibly for a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
And a second, and all in favor? We are adjourned.